What? I have on my computer nine eleven, I know it's wrong, I think it's seven minutes ahead.
Nine oh four.
Nine oh four, yes. Can we do the flag salute? Mr. Pino? Can you lead us? Oh, we don't have a flag, huh?
Getting it, yes.
Well, let's uh. Let's begin. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
See, Rocco?
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee. Trustee Lamro?
Here.
Trustee Pino?
Here.
Trustee Ralph? She's absent. Trustee Rodriguez?
Here.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Agents to the agenda, if any?
None.
Public hearing, delegation or comments from audience. Persons who want to comment on topics not including on the agenda or comment on the agenda topics invited to submit comments via email to Daniela Tabarez at email. Honor before us Thursday, January twenty eighth at five PM. Please limit comments to three hundred words or less. All comments submitted will be read aloud during the meeting. Please note all email correspondence relating to this meeting will become part of the board meeting minutes. If your comments is related to a specific item on the agenda, please identify the agenda item and subject in the subject of the email. Any comments? Submitted?
None were received.
Okay, good. Informational items. Board development training.
So. As we had discussed before, we've been talking about, you know, working collaboratively and have some sort of foundational. Just some foundation in terms of how we're going to move forward and proceed as a team. And I know that there's been a lot of changes, not just lately, but even before prior years to me being superintendent. So in hearing your concerns and hearing your desires and a lot of it has to do with the conversations we've we've had also as a leadership team here at the district. I came across a great team of two and who have experience doing this type of work. And we've had a few conversations prior to this and that's what led to this day. So I'm really excited to introduce to you Mike and Amy and I'll let them do their introduction themselves. And they're here to guide us in this work because it's not just a one size fits all. And it's not just the one sitting meeting type of work. It really is strong professional development that's going to have, like I said before, the foundation for us to moving forward and have that one message, that same message that is communicating, not just to the staff, but also to the community and our parents and students. So. So Mike and Amy?
Well, good morning and thank you for that. We are excited to be here. Welcome to our studio and I call it our studio because with this whole COVID thing, we too had to switch because we normally show up and hang out and you have to try and chase us out like company you no longer want to see because we keep trying to eat all your food. But because of COVID, we are locked here in Chico, California up north and we're hanging out. We had to develop a studio a couple of weeks ago. And so I just wanted to point out a couple of things that we noticed. We test run this one other time. Behind me, everyone was distracted because as I started talking, like, hey, wait a minute, what's the paintings behind you? So I'll have Amy talk about the paintings in a moment, alright? Also, I don't know if you can see, but I've got a friend keeping a close eye on me and every now and then he barks. So let me see if I can do this real quickly without destroying the studio. There we go. So I've got company right behind me. So if you hear some barking or something biting me, it's not you know what it is, okay? And then there's one more running around. Again, I'll let Amy explain who they are, the guest. Let's see, I think that was everything about here. What I do want to do real quickly though is Kayla will tell you, I have folks teach me how to pronounce names correctly. So at this moment, my, I'm over it. My ego says, make sure I know the right names. And because of the way the screen is set up, I no longer get to see your names. So I'm guessing. So what I'm going to ask you to do is just give us an introduction of who each one of you are. And I'll say, Mr. Board President. So, Mr. President, if you could just start by tell us just briefly, like thirty seconds. Who are you? How long you been on the board? Just something that'll give Amy and I a sense of one, how to pronounce your names correctly. And two, just how long you been around? So if you could do that and then Amy and I'll do the full on sixteen hour introduction of ourselves and we'll go over our life history. And it'll be very exciting, the opposite of what you were promised. So, so, Mr. President, if you could go first, just a little bit about you.
Robert.
You're on mute. There you are.
No, I think I wasn't close enough. It happens. I'm Robert Garcia, I'm the board president right now. Been and as trustee for a little bit over a year.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm, I'm a new, I'm a new guy. I'm a civil engineer. But my profession, but I am a the position I occupy at work, it's a civil engineer technician. That's about it. I have two kids at the school, so.
That's a good thing to add as well. Thank you. Now here's the great thing about it, since you went first, you get to tell us who's going next.
Girl, since she's the second.
Hi, I'm Margot Lamro. I'm the vice president this year. Been on the board same amount of time as Robert, little over one year. And my greatest achievement is my children.
Nice, nice. Alright, you get to tell us who's next.
Mr. Pino?
Of course. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. My name is Ernesto Pino. I've been on the board a little over seven years. I was a site council member for about a year and a half. And then I transferred over to this new position. I was privileged to serve as a two-time board president. Very happy to be part of this team. I have a daughter who graduated two years ago. She is now a tenth grader in a school, local school here, Central Union High. I'm sorry, Central High. And so I'm just, I'm privileged to be part of this team.
Thank you. Is it Ernest or Ernesto?
Ernesto is the actual name.
Got it, alright. That's what's the first time for me to ever get it right. Alright, my, my day is done because I got one thing right, I'm out of here. Alright, so Ernesto, tell us who goes next?
Hi.
Pick Miss. Go ahead, yes, of course. Ms. B.
Hi. My name is Beatriz Rodriguez and usually people call me B, nice and short. A retired classified employee after twenty ninety years. Been a board member for thirty eight years, was defeated in the last election. And I've been recently appointed and back for five months. So I had children and grandchildren currently at Meadows.
Nice. Okay, you're going to teach me. I'm learning from you. Alright. And then there's, it looks like we have one more board member who just arrived. She's excited and happy to be here. And basically what we're doing is you are just telling us everything about you, your entire life history in thirty seconds. No pressure. Basically, because we want to make sure we know who names are and then Amy and I will introduce ourselves. So good morning.
Oh, okay. Alright, I'm Rochelle Rolfe, I've been on the board for ten years. I've had six children. Good morning. I've had six kids attend, six children attend Meadows Union. All five of them have graduated from Meadows, one of them's previously attending, he's in fifth grade. And I've been happy to be on the board ten years there and I served also in another district in Hopkien, so. It's been a great experience being on Meadows, part of Meadows family, so thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so I will go next. My name is Mike Walsh and I've been a board member. So Amy and I wear several different hats and it kind of helps us with all the work that we do with other boards and other organizations. And so we prefer to do a lot of team building and strategic planning and leadership development. Sometimes it's fun, it's always fun for her and I. So most of the time it seems to be fun for the participants. Last night, a group that we were with here locally, when we were done, one of the board members said this, he's been on the board now for five years and he said, this was the best conversation I've ever had as a board member. And I said, don't blame me, that's your fault. So it's the same thing to you today. If the conversations are rich, that will be your fault because all we do is Amy and I are like serial conversation starters. We, we start a conversation and then we disappear and we eavesdrop on you. And then we come back out and start another conversation. So I hope it is fun and enjoyable because you're having conversations with each other and we're just eavesdropping and trying to capture as many notes as possible. I've been elected to the Butte County Office of Education Board here in Northern California. We're about an hour and a half north of Cheek, excuse me, north of Sacramento. And I've been on the board now for ten years. I'm currently the board president, but my, the bigger achievement for me when it comes to school boards is two thousand and eighteen, I served as the president for the California School Boards Association. And talk about an education for four years as an officer. Oh my goodness. I know just enough now that I know I don't know much of anything. So it's been a fantastic ten or eleven years rather. And so for me, this is the opportunity to just kind of help boards understand a few things and just make sense out of stuff. We're not going to teach you anything new, okay? There may be some things you hear new, but it's not because we're teaching you something brand new or earth shattering. It's, we're just going to resurface some things that you already know and we're just trying to help you figure out. So how do you put those in practice? I'm going to let Amy talk a little bit about herself and also I'll have Amy talk a little bit about the booklet and the way we want you to use that. And then we're going to dive in because we want to make the best use of your time and I've already been talking too much. So Amy, go right ahead.
Good morning, everybody. Excited to be here. I am also a trustee. I'm going, serving my third, starting my third term, so my ninth, entering my ninth year as a Butte County Office of Education trustee. I'm also a faculty member for the California School Board Association for their Masters in Governance Training Program. I am, my favorite title for me is Nana. I am Nana to Owen, who is, will be two years old next month. And you have a booklet that I heard was delivered in a fabulous binder. It is yours to take notes on and just kind of follow along where you can put your personal thoughts, jot down questions you might have for us. I'll also be monitoring the chat today, so if you have a question, feel free to use the chat or on your bottom of your screen, you have reactions. So you can use a reaction saying, oh, I don't really know what you're talking about. Or you can give us a thumbs up or you can raise your hand and let us know if you have a question to ask and we'll keep an eye out for you. And I think that's pretty much about me. The two critters that are lying around here, the one that Mike showed you is Sarge. He is my, my, I dog sit for my daughter and her boyfriend. And then I have another one named Levi, Black Lab. So if you hear barking, I apologize and I will quiet them as best I can, but they're typically pretty, pretty quiet. But we have had some bad storms and occasionally they decide to let us know that the thunder or the trees cracking are bothering them. So there you go. Excited to be here with you today. The paintings that Mike is pointing to, a dear friend of mine is an artist. And so that tree is representative of a road trip she went on in Oregon. And there are two watercolors that are next to it. So I am housing, the watercolors are mine personally. The other tree is a part of her collection that she said was taking up too much room at the house and not having storage. I said, well, I have a wall, it can hang on. So, so I am doing a art on loan project, so that's it.
I had to find my mute button. So there you go, now you have the story behind the art. And I forgot to mention, yeah, my coolest title, it's not my favorite, it's my coolest, which I guess it makes it my favorite. I'm Papa. We got like seven grandkids and so there's a bunch of them and I'm good with that. They're making me crazy. I think of it this way, it's, I always tell folks, grandkids are God's gift for me not killing my own kids. Because my boys made me crazy most times, so I love my grandkids. My own boys though, still questionable. So here's what we'll do. That's a little bit about us and also Amy gave you about fifteen different ways to get questions answered. There's always the old fashioned interrupt me, okay? So at any time, feel free to jump in and interrupt because there is nothing I'm going to say that's so critical that you must hear every single syllable. You are free to interrupt and ask questions. Again, this is your conversation and we want you to get what you can from it. We're just going to walk you through some thoughts. This is the foundations, okay? What we're going to do right now is work with you on, just helping you understand some of our foundations that we're, we're playing with and help you to get an understanding of what it is that we see as board governance that'll help you with your district. So right here, we want to talk a little bit about improving school board effectiveness. One of my favorite books I picked up some time ago and it talks about the lighthouse study. Anyone familiar with the lighthouse study? Not a big deal. You still get to stay in class because I didn't know anything about the lighthouse study until I spent some time, again, getting my education at CSBA. Lighthouse study was a study that was done in Iowa by the Iowa School Boards Association. And what they figured out was that these five things that you see here, these five bullets that I have on the screen, that when boards, when school boards monitored these five things, when they spent their focus and their time here, student achievement was at its greatest and they've got a few other things in there. And these are the kinds of things that we're really going to be helping you move towards. What are clear expectations around student achievement? Duh, that's how I like to say that, that's why schools exist, student achievement. That's first and foremost, right? Then that there's some conditions you need to create for success around professional development. That's a conversation we will have later. How do you hold the system accountable? Meaning monitoring the progress, looking at the dashboard, all these tools that we have out there. We'll be playing a little bit about that. This thing about build collective will, that is about the entire district. And one of the things that they point out is that if the school board, I was doing some work, again, like we were talking about last night. And one of the things I mentioned to them is that there was a gentleman who did some research around what are the ways that, you know, these big initiatives? Every time a district takes on a big initiative, you know, they want to make all these changes. And he said, one of the number one reasons why those fail is that the board and the district, they don't have a collective will that matches the implement, the will of the implementation. Like they think, that implementation thing, go for it, do whatever there, but it has nothing to do with us. And the truth is, it's all ubiquitous, it's all wrapped around one conversation where if it's important for the board, then it should be important throughout the work of the board. So that's what that build collective will is all about. And then this thing right here, learn together as a team, that's team building, right? And I know a lot of times folks get a little nervous. Well, let me, let me ask, how many of you, when you hear, I'm so excited, we get to go do some team building? How many of you actually get excited? Yeah, that's what I've had, like one or two of you, right? Notice, I do team building for a living. Notice my hand is still down, okay? I've been to some team buildings before where the team building is just absolutely horrible, right? I get a dumb chill. And if you've never had a dumb chill, you may not just know what it's called, but a dumb chill is when you see someone do something and you're so embarrassed for them that the hair stands up on the back of your neck and you just kind of shiver every now and then. That's a dumb chill. And I have been to some trainings before where it is really cold, alright? I've just seen some bad team building. So what I always tell everybody is Amy and I rarely do the team building activities where everybody has to figure out how do you cross the magic maze and if you do that, the planet is saved or some silly story. I've got a ton of those because I used to do a lot of work with middle school students. And I don't like to do them that often and here's the secret. The only reason team building activities happen is because it's an excuse to have the conversation that you would have if you could have the conversation. That's it. I'm thinking this group, just listening to you chat this morning, you don't need an excuse to have a conversation. So I promise, we keep talking or either you do the talking, there will be no team building special events where we bring out this special magic, whatever activity. Team building is just talking about how you want things to be, okay? So we're going to do that. Now, here's what we're headed towards. Get my projection equipment to work correctly here. So this is what we always want to build, is we are looking to build a team that when it comes to governance, I like to ask the question. So as a matter of fact, I'm going to go ahead and ask the question. How many people are there on your governance team? When you have, when you're, you're fully elected, everyone, all the positions are filled at this moment. So here's the simple question and yes, it's a trick question. And if you want to, you can cheat and kind of get a sense of where I'm headed with it by looking at this slide. But tell me, everybody just hold up the number of fingers for your governance team. How many people are on your governance team? I see six, someone else have an answer? I had five, I got six, I got sixes, yes, okay, you're wonderful job. Six is the number. It is never just the electeds, it's the electeds and the superintendent. So on a county board, for us, we have eight members on our governance team because we have a seven member board and a district, excuse me, a county superintendent who is also elected. So we've got eight. The number is always even and it includes the superintendent. Now, the reason I say that, I was working with a superintendent once to prepare for her board training. We were going to do a retreat and she said to me, should I be there? And I said, are you planning to be fired? She said, no. I said, good, that means you're part of the governance team. Yes, you should be there. And the reason I say that is that one of the things that Amy and I are really moving towards as we have our conversations with you is that the governance team made up of the electeds and the superintendent, that's the team who's responsible for the guidance and then the implementation. So the elected, your job is to give guidance. And what that looks like is this model here that we have, that we've adopted from Board Source. It's just simply that on that top left, that superintendent is displacing the board. That's where you have boards that are just, they aren't real clear about what they're supposed to do. And the superintendent, for one reason or another, is carrying more of the load than they should. That's not providing real good governance, right? That's governance by observation. And that's not where we want to head with you. The lower left-hand corner where the superintendent and the board are going through the motions, obviously for obvious reasons, that is not where we're headed whatsoever. Then you have the board that is doing all of the work and the superintendent is just sort of wondering what to do next. They can't do anything. That's governance by management or in some cases we refer to that as micromanagement. And I always tell board members when I find them, they have that propensity because we all want to solve the problem. And I always say, look, if you're doing the work of the superintendent, of the staff, you shouldn't be a board member. You should go be staff. Yeah, hey, what about that, right? So it's really that where we're headed with this is that top right-hand corner where the superintendent is in constructive partnership with the board. That's true governance and that they're working together, the board gives guidance and then the superintendent and the staff implement with fidelity. That's where we're headed, that's where all of our conversations try and move us. Before I leave this slide, any thoughts, special ah-hahs? Anything you want to share based on what I've shared so far because I've been talking a lot? Alright. I'm back. Technology was, technology was not my friend for about six seconds there, you couldn't see what was on my screen. Alright, so here's, there we go. Now we're going to pick up the speed and we're going to jump in and this is going to be where Amy and I are going to, I'm going to talk a little bit about this thing around smart and healthy cultures because what we're going to be working on is culture, right? And here's what we're going to be doing is Amy and I, we'd like to start the conversations and from here on out, I'm going to ask you to have your conversations with each other. It's a little odd, if we were in the room with you, I would ask the question and then the tendency is just like in class, you, if the teacher asks the question, the students always speak to the teacher, right? And here's what I always like to say, your conversations are with each other. So I'm really going to, I keep pointing towards my screen like this because what I'm going to ask you to do is we're going to, I'm going to stop in a couple, after a couple of slides here, I'm going to stop and I'm going to ask you to make sense out of this concept. Now, if we were in the room with you, Amy and I would still be there. But what I would do is I would ask the question, I say, now turn, talk to each other. And sometimes folks still want to talk to me. It's not our district. We love you, we want to do everything we can to support you, but ultimately, this isn't our district. So Amy and I, we don't tell you anything. We offer some advice, we give some care. Somebody told me one time, the best analogy to use is Amy and I are your midwives. We want to help deliver a baby, it's your baby, okay? So your conversations with each other are what's going to drive this. So if we were in the room and you started talking to me or to Amy, I might do something like this. I might hide behind the paper or if you're talking to me too much in the camera, I will disappear from the camera. That is a reminder, we are eavesdropping, we are in the conversation, we are listening, but it's your conversation because it's your district. Amy and I respect that. We don't try and tell, you will, you will find that we are not very prescriptive. We don't prescribe anything, but we certainly will offer you some conversations that will allow you to figure it out for yourself. So, here we go. This thing by Patrick Lencioni, one of my favorite authors. He talks about the difference between smart and healthy, okay? And he says, smart is the stuff that any organization, if you are in business, congratulations, you are smart. You have to be smart about your work. In schools, these are some examples of how we measure smart, right? We talk about whether you're, what does your dashboard say? What is your, what are you about your LCAP? What are you doing about professional development? What are your, all the strategic plans that you have? Those are the documents that people tend to find and it's measurable and you can talk about our growth at three point six percent over a period of time, all that stuff. In companies, organizations, they talk about our marketing plan and here's our, our sales targets, et cetera. That's the smart stuff. That's the stuff, and Patrick Lencioni, it's funny that we were talking about I Love Lucy because he talks about it as he's explaining this and that this healthy thing, healthy is a little bit tougher to set a goal. Like, how do you measure increase in trust, right? Are, are, we're very healthy and we've set some goals around trust. We want to improve trust by six measures of the, as a, you can't, it's kind of hard to identify. So he was saying that one, the one way he likes to explain this notion between a smart and a healthy culture is he's talking about an episode of I Love Lucy. He says Ricky comes walking through the door and Lucy is crawling around on the carpet. And she's looking, he goes, honey, what are you doing? She says, well, I lost one of my earrings. And he gets down on the carpet and he starts digging around looking with her. And finally he says, honey, are you sure you lost it in here? And she says, no, I lost it in the bedroom, but the lighting out here is much better. And it's like, there's the joke, right? And he says that the reason he talks about that is that for most associations, most organizations want to spend all their time and Amy and I have had so many experiences where folks say, we don't want to talk about this healthy culture thing. We just want to dive in and get to work on being smart and they want to dive in and jump in and write goals and make goals and we always say, stop. Here's the reason why. Lencioni says, with all the organizations he's seen, that if you are smart, it doesn't necessarily mean you're healthy. He said, if you want to understand a little more about healthy, he said that healthy organizations, when you're thinking of it that way, he said that there are, sometimes it's easier to think about when it's not a healthy organization. So these are signs of when an organization is not healthy. You have low trust, there's a lot of blame that goes around, a lot of anxiety, the hostile, the arguments and the tendency for people to hide their mistakes, sarcasm, all of these things. That's a very toxic environment. And what he says is that if you're smart, but you're not very healthy, you're going to struggle. You're going to constantly bring in smart people, but you're going to have a lot of turnover because it's just, who wants to work in that kind of an environment, right? And he said that, but when the companies he's worked around, he's seen, the ones that are healthy always get smarter. Let me say that again. The organizations that are healthy over time always get smarter. In the case of schools and school boards and school districts, a healthier culture leads to better student achievement. That's what we're here for, right? That's kind of the conversation. And the challenge for a lot of folks is that they don't want to spend a lot of time on this healthy because how do you do that? How do you make healthy? That's team building, okay? That's why I say, team building is kind of a critical part of this conversation because what it does is it helps you figure out where you are. And team building, again, by the way, is not the things where you necessarily have to go out to go bowling together one night or everybody get in the vehicle and go to the ropes course. Team building is really talking about the culture. And how do you want the culture to be? Because if you can really get the culture, the healthy part of it worked out, then what happens is we move through this model right here. So I'll do this matrix and then I'm going to stop talking and I'll let you make some sense out of this conversation around smart and healthy. So on the far left, along the side where it says smart and it says unhappy employees, that's because the organization is incredibly smart, but it's not very healthy, right? And that's where you have a lot of the turnover for all those reasons that I just listed for you. Down in the bottom lower corner, you have a company that is not very smart and is not very healthy. Lencioni says that's usually one that's on their way out. They're not going to be around for very long. And then down this bottom part here, if you're healthy but you're not smart, those are called startups. I've done some work with a few startups and it's a party. I got to tell you, they're excited about each other, it's, none of those. It's, none of those toxic behaviors exist. They're just excited, but they're not very clear on what they're doing. And with them, I do spend a lot more time saying, hey, let's, let's really identify your culture. It's fine, let's identify the goals for what you're trying to do so you can be smarter. The companies that are smart and healthy, he says, the way you know it, you have a lot of committed employees. Their individual values are connected to the organizational purpose. In other words, you hire somebody for their strengths and congratulations, you've put them in a place that is connected to their strengths. They're excited, they're engaged, and they show up all the time because they're just excited about coming to work. So here's, I'm going to push pause and say, this is not, this is not the pejorative. We're not asking you to, to talk in a negative way. We're asking you to talk in an honest way. Based on your, your perspective, right? This is my question to you is just simply, where do you see the district? And this notion between smart and healthy, where do you see it? And again, it's not a right or wrong answer, good or bad. It's just, hey, at this moment, the snapshot in time, I kind of feel like we are, and then just fill, fill in the blank. Some people talk about it based on the admin, some people talk about it based on students, some about teachers, some about the board. I'm going to open it up and say, you get to talk about it however you think of it when you, when you consider your district in terms of being smart and healthy. So it's just, we're going to take about five minutes and then just share with each other. Just have that, whoever would like to go first, just jump in and talk about where do you see the district right now? And just be honest about it. Again, Amy and I aren't going to, we're not going to shame you. We're just going to talk through it, right? So whoever would like to go first, go right ahead. Where do you see it?
Well, I see us headed in a great direction. I'm glad that we have administration that's willing to work with us and to educate us. Just being in for one year, you guys know how much you've taught me and I really enjoy working with the other board members because we are concerned about the students and about the physical presentation of the school and trying to find employees that want to work with us and, and at the school. And I appreciate all of you for trying to head that way.
I, I see our school focused in on, on one message. And I see our school focusing on a smart and healthy climate. I also have the opportunity to focus on growth within our surroundings. There have been some good positive advancement within our strategic moves. Thank goodness, we have great ambient and we also have a great commitment from everyone who I've had a pleasure of working with. I think we serve the public right. I think we're enhancing compliance and I see that day in, day out. I see the deliverance in that. I also see that we're, we as, as, as one are governing with equality. And I see that because everyone seems to be on board. I also like the fact that we avoid any misconduct that is around us. And then if we do get some of that, we work with it. So I'm saying that our student achievement should be no less than an example moving forward because we're aiming at growing, we're aiming at, at just developing, developing one another. So that is my, my take on that.
I do have to agree. We're not quite there, but we're heading in the right direction. We're heading in, I guess in your little squares, we're heading towards the top, top right hand side. We're trying to work there. One thing I, I, I mean, I, I see committed, all the teachers committed, the administration. One thing that kind of frustrates me a little bit is, is, is the parent involvement. And not that parents don't want to get involved, they do, but it's just that it's, it's a, I, I mean, you can see it now. Parents, and I'm, I'm talking because Ms. Ms. Rodriguez put in a couple of seminar, I guess, I don't know how you call them, but webinar or where she was giving information out. And you can see that, that all the parents that went were nervous. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that we should have maybe close to 200 parents and, and we, we don't. They, they showed up maybe where like maybe 40. And, and that's, to me, that's a low number, but the involvement, but most of them are kind of like scared. I mean, we, with the COVID, we were put in a, in a situation where we, we have, we, we're part of the teaching system now. As parents, we have to help our kids out and, and before we all depended 100% on the teachers. Now we need to step back and, and now the teachers depend on us instead of the other way around. And thus, I think that's carrying a lot of parents. I, I wish head on we, 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 I don't know, some, some, I don't know if we can do some kind of a, involve the parents in some trainings because it, they really do need it. They, 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 they need to learn how to teach their kids. Well, and that's, that's, but I, I think we're heading, overall, I think we're heading in the right direction. I just, just a little, a little feedback and I hope, I hope you guys, as, as board, we can work together and, and try to solve that issue. Thank you.
Anyone else, including staff, you're welcome to jump in here and share. Where do you just, and this is again, this is not right or wrong. This isn't going to, this isn't anything other than just sort of, here's where I see us. And boy, I'd love for us to figure out some things around, where do you see as far as healthy? We're in those quadrants. Keep going. You guys are doing fantastic. But anyone else who cares to share, please go right ahead.
Okay, I'll take a turn. I think we're very healthy and the thing I really admire about the administration or appreciate is that I have a child at home. And I think that there's been really hard times for everybody, but our, for our district has really stepped up and done a good job at distance learning. The teachers have, if my son doesn't get on there, they let me know. We keep in constant contact. The office, they serve, you know, drive up and get lunch or breakfast and they're just been on top of everything. And I really think they're very committed employees and they have the connection. And I'm just think that we're in a very smart and healthy place right now in a very hard situation. Because I have children that go to the high school and I see the difference of the high school versus, I mean, I know it's lower, upper and lower grades, but I see the difference in the commitment that Meadows has to helping the students succeed. They have backpacks and Chromebooks they gave each kid and we were able to pull up. And they just keep us really informed and involved because like Mr. Trusty Garcia said, we have to be like the teacher. We have to be everything here at the school, like we're at home. It's a whole different mindset, a whole different change for all of us. And I'm super appreciative for Meadows and for all of, of working together as a team. I'm very thankful for that. I've served on other boards and I'm thankful for that we are able to work together as a team. We all have the same goals and mindset and we work towards those to make everything better for the students and student achievement. So I'm really thankful for everyone's hard work.
I think that right now, our board is working together effectively. In the past 10 years, we had have five superintendents. We had had different boards. Some years it's been healthy, other years it hasn't been healthy. But at the same time, we had two superintendents a long time. We had a mission statement back in the day. We had very high parent participation. But I think that boiled down to that we had meetings in the evening for parents. The time that was more available to the parents where today we have them more during the day. But I know that it can be done because we had it before. But we're starting all over. We have a, a new superintendent. She was acting superintendent the year before that. But as a board, need to set our, what we're about and get the parents to buy in. Parents will come if we make them welcome. And by working together, I know we all have different ideas and everything else. But the bottom line, once the board makes a decision and we work together, we can make the change come above. The other thing that's very hard about our school district is that we're a school and a school district. And when negotiation comes about, that comes very controversial. It's hard on the parents, it's hard on the students, and it's harder on the faculty. We have not had that much turnaround in faculty, but we had had a lot of turnaround in administration. And that, that hurts. The history is still here. There's been things that had happened in the past that the board member, the new board members don't know about. And, and I don't bring it up because that's in the past. I think that we should move forward and keep moving from there. But, but right now, I think that we're heading in the right direction because we're all looking at the, at things differently. We're all committed to the same thing and that's our students, our students. And we really like to engage the parents. The parents need to come along with us. But with the new administration, I think they're working to trying to get teachers, the professional training that they need. But if we don't get the buy-in, the changes aren't going to come about. Everybody needs to be committed to the same goals. And that's the reason that we need to have a mission statement for our school district so that everybody knows what Meadows is all about.
So I'll follow up with Ms. Rodriguez's comment because it's, she hits it right on the nail when it comes to, obviously, parent involvement is one of our, our priorities and that's something that we're working on. I, I, I definitely looking at the notes on page six, I really appreciate the, the note that stays about an understanding that a context that encourages open, healthy disagreement and constructive conflict. And that's been something that even as a leadership team, we say all the time and Daniela and Ms. Hernandez, Ms. Tavares and Ms. Hernandez can, can agree with me that we can agree to disagree in a healthy way. Ms. Rodriguez always says that in board meetings when maybe she doesn't agree with, with an action, but always with, with the notion, you know, what's best for the kids. And, and I know that sometimes that term gets overused and, and it comes like a model for everything. But ultimately, if we really believe in, in, is it for the kids? Is it for the kids? Then that really drives our decision. In looking at this chart, I, I have to say that we do have committed employees at every level. I just think, and, and this is just my personal experience because of, of coming in as a principal and now superintendent is the clear purpose is not there. And Ms. Rodriguez says about, about, and actually she's the one that would bring up, that brought up this conversation and got, got us started in this conversation about making sure that we develop a mission, vision, values and goals. And actually, and that's why me reaching out to you, Mike and Amy, because I said, yeah, that's definitely it. You know, there's a lot of times the, the why is not there. And so, or the what at this point, you know, we have committed employees, we have talented people. We have committed at, at every level. And so the commitment is there, but if we don't have a, a specific purpose, a common goal across the, the, you know, for, for the staff, for administration and for parents, then we're missing the point and we're missing the mark. And so my, my hope and, and it would have been easier. And I, and I appreciate Mike's comment about, we can't get right into the work if we don't understand and we don't build that foundation, that strong foundation so that we can get to that. And so we, we, we have a lot of work to do and I'm excited because we can never, you know, we can never get perfect and we're never going to get there because that's not the right way to do things. It's, it's continue to evolve and always agree to disagree, but in a healthy way.
Good. Anyone else? Anyone else want to share, add anything, final thoughts?
I just want to quickly add that, you know, coming in as a, as a new principal this school year, what I see is really the hunger for that direction, to really have that collaborative piece and building our healthy culture here and to really continue to grow smarter. I see that hunger and I, and we just really need to dive in there to really get them going in that, to really get going, all of us in the right direction.
Okay. Daniela, anything?
I, I think I would agree with Ms. Rodriguez and, and well, both Ms. Rodriguez, Kayla and Ms. B, that I think that we are healthier than what we were in the past. You know, I think we're towards the right direction, you know, trying to, to see, okay, you know, that, that does kind of, kind of has settled because as it's been mentioned, there's been a big turn on in administration. And I think that's something that really hurt the district, you know, that there was no, no stability. And now, you know, I'm in my second year, about two, two, two years and a half. So I already, Ms. Rodriguez is also, you know, as a principal and a superintendent. So we're not that new anymore to where, you know, when you come in, you to a position, I think it's, it's so many things, you know, because you need to kind of establish our process of how you work and what needs to get done. And, you know, all the, the, the little checkboxes that you need to check. But once you've been in a position for a certain amount of time, then it's okay, you know. Now let's, you know, where are we, where are we going to, where, what, what's our goal? What, where do, where, what do we want to reach? And I really think that, that we're in that place now where, okay, where, where is Meadows going to? You know, what is it that we want for Meadows?
I love what you guys are sharing, right? So I'm just going to be honest with you. I love what you're sharing. I think you're in the right place at the right time, the right conversation. Because all the things you're describing are what's important to you, what you've noticed, your perspective. That's what Amy and I want to work with. Again, it's not what we think. We're not the experts who've come in to tell you, here's what you need to do. We're the experts who've come to say, we want to ask you some questions. And what just happened just now is about you sharing your perspective. That's how Amy and I like to play. So what we've been talking about so far is these are the things that, that we're headed toward. These are the models that we, we work towards. We're going to keep coming back to this conversation about smart and healthy cultures often. We're going to talk about that in, in terms of how it plays out. And see, oh, my technology was working earlier. It doesn't, that's okay because I'll do it the old fashioned way. So one of the things we are, we want to look at is you've already got a sense of we're working towards this shared governance and we want it to be something that moves you towards healthier, smarter, more, or rather district. The smarter you are, the more you're graduating, et cetera, et cetera. So here's what I'm going to talk about. This is another model that we refer to often, okay? And this is by Ron Hyfitt and Marty Linsky and it's this thing around technical assistance and adaptive behavior. Now, the way it works, I like to use a medical analogy because I watched a video one time of Ron Hyfitt himself explaining this model. And he used a medical analogy. And if it was good enough for the guy who developed the model, I'm good, right? So I'll use, I'll do my best to imitate him. And what he talked about was that imagine that somebody's having a medical emergency, right? He, the heart attack, right? You go to the doctor and you just, all you have to do is say, ooh, I don't know, it feels kind of, I don't know what's going, having trouble breathe, whatever it is. The doctor will recognize that you might be having heart attack symptoms. Figure it out. He'll say, Mike, you're having a heart attack. We need to save your life. All I need to do with the doctor is go, uh huh, all right, that's my permission. Do we have permission to save your life? I like my grandkids, uh huh. So it puts me out, I'm asleep. Now, here's what happens. The work is done. It's really clear and easy to define, right? The problem is having a heart attack, doctor knows exactly what to do to fix it. They talk about blockages and everything and they stint this or angioplasty, whatever that, they do all these things. But it's, it's clear and easy to define what the problem is. It's the consultant or the expert, the surgeons, the expert here, that's who's doing the work. And then it's the type of work that can be done as fast as possible. We're going to do it now. So this is about skill sets. So think in terms of, do I have the knowledge? Do I have the skills to perform open heart surgery, right? If the answer is yes, then you are the person that should be delivering that service. I have none of those skills. I should never, ever attempt to deliver those services, okay? So let's, let's just be honest, all right? So this is what the doctors do. Now, what's interesting about this is have an incredibly high success rate for, for alleviating. is have an incredibly high success rate for, for alleviating the problem in that moment. Their success rate is really, really good. They do well. The challenge is, when, if you measure their success by whether or not somebody has to come back for a repeat visit for the same reason, their incredibly high success rate drops down to about 20%, okay? People are coming back before, to the doctor for the same reason. It's not because of the doctors. Here's why. What it takes now is there's this thing about adaptive behaviors or changing mindset. I've had my heart attack. The doctor has already told me, I know all these rules about it. I need to exercise, I need to watch my diet, I need to manage how much salt I take in, hidden sugar, and, and all this stuff. I know these things. I got to stop smoking two, two packs a day. I know this stuff, but my behaviors don't show it. So he says, what happens is all of a sudden, this adaptive behavior thing requires learning. And the doctor is telling me that my salt intake is way too high. And I'm looking at him like, what are you talking about? I don't use that much salt. This is all I ever use. And he looks at me and says, yeah, that's about a day's worth. Oh, oh, I, I don't have this knowledge, I don't understand that. So it's, it, it, what it is, when you have the, the, the patient, they have to do some learning. It requires some learning on their part. Then it also involves stakeholders. My wife had a kidney transplant, and she was in kidney failure. And during the time she was doing dialysis, she had a special diet. And me and the boys would come home for dinner, and if something didn't look right on the plate, we would stop, we would freeze time and go, wait a minute, can we eat this? Meaning, can you eat this, right? And she would say, yeah, and tell us and explain it to us and justify why we could eat it. And everybody else was like, okay, let's eat, yay! Because it was about the rest of the family had to learn. It wasn't just that my wife had to learn some new habits, the rest of the family had to also learn them. With my mother, who has diabetes, her, her blood sugar went to eight fifty at one point, over eight hundred, most people die. My mother survived it. She spent three weeks in a diabetic coma, six months recovering from the coma. And what's been interesting is because we have a lot of diabetics in the family, we understood immediately all the changes that needed to be made. And we struggled with that sometimes with my mother, because she didn't understand what hidden sugars are and processed foods and everything else. She's got a lifetime of learning that we're trying to unlearn, and we're walking through it with her. So all of a sudden, it's not just the person who had the heart attack, but it's family around them, because if the family keeps eating the same way, the odds of that person who had the heart attack becoming healthier start to go down dramatically. And this is how we hit that 20% mark again. And then finally, here comes the toughest part. It requires experiment and progress. Not always progress, sometimes it's experiment and discover, oops, that ain't working. We got to try something different, right? So this thing around culture, he said that, again, this is the healthy stuff. Healthy is about how do you change the behaviors? Technical assistance means, hey, you got to have some of the skills. Now, Amy and I, we will not spend a lot of time with you in the technical assistance arena. When she is wearing her MIG hat, when she's a trainer for CSBA, she is working on technical assistance, the Brown Act. Well, how do you run a meeting? What, I don't even know what else she talks about in her MIG training, but she's got a ton of it. And it's all the technical stuff. Where Amy and I like to show up is really when we're working in this arena, where we're, we're in our hat or beacon, is we like to talk about the adaptive behaviors. Like, how do you get the board working in a way, all the things you've already been describing? How do you get the board organized in a way that it's so healthy, that, again, that mindset, team building, that you're incredibly healthy in your culture, and it continues to create smarter results and better results? So again, I'm going to hit pause, because this model here is a lot. Right around who's providing the assistance. And the reason I'd like for you to look at this is as you're having conversations about implementing plans, I want you to always be thinking, are we implementing this plan because we don't have the knowledge or the skills to do it? Or do we already have all the knowledge and skills? And what we need to do now is just figure out how do we coach people through so that the behaviors start to match the expectations? So I'm going to stop, and I'm going to pause and just say, please, have a conversation, ignore Mike and Amy, you know, talking to us. And again, some of you were starting to tell me about how much you love each other. I don't need you to tell me, you tell each other, you talk to each other. So again, I'm going to disappear a little bit here this time and just say, hey, have an open conversation. What makes sense about technical assistance versus adaptive behavior in this conversation? So I am going to mute myself, and then I'm going to-
That was cute, I laughed.
Where, where did he go?
Oh.
Sorry, my internet was being all crazy. I was going in and out of the meeting.
Yeah, we saw that.
But I got my hotspot on my phone, so hopefully that helps.
Perfect. So just, yeah, just jump in there, have the conversation. What makes sense? If you've got questions, ask more questions. If it makes sense, just go for it. Have a conversation, guys.
I, I'm just interested in the conversation, in the, in the, the statement of Mr. Garcia. And I, because he attended the meeting with the parents, and I think, I, in looking at it through that lens, it's almost like we need to build that or create a culture where we can have that adaptive behavior, focus on the adaptive behavior for the parents, because they've, they've been with us for, for a long time, but it's the change in administration. And, and I'm just saying it's that, but it might not be that. But something is, is it about that their, their involvement is not as much as before? And maybe again, is the fear of this too shall pass, or, you know, they'll be gone and somebody else will come in. It's the same with, with staff as well. But I think the, the knowledge might be there, but it's the, the, and we can continue doing the technical assistance, but it's the, the mindset that we need to work on to build that trust on, on parents and create that healthy, you know, parent involvement, that healthy direction with our staff. Because we can train them until we're blue in the face, but it's not about the knowledge as much as the adaptive behavior. I guess that's just how I'm seeing it right now.
I think you're right. So starting, well, just like Ms. Rolf and myself having trouble with technical, I think that's a really big deal in our school's district. And I appreciate the fact that you've taken on the responsibility of, of finding ways to make that easier for us. Well, hope that it makes it easier and better for us just because of our being in the country. So I, I think that's part of the problem with the parents not being able to. I tried to log on, and I couldn't get logged on. And that's why I called Geek Squad to come and help me, because I, I couldn't do that. But when they left yesterday, I was confident this morning that was going to happen. So on my part, and it's hard, I know, because we can't be, get back to the school and see how it works. But on my part, I need to do something about that. And I don't know, maybe technical is something that we're really going to have to look at before we get back to class. In, in class, schooling class.
Ever since I've been at Meadows, because it's been, what, 11 years, 12 years, I've had my kids at school at Meadows, it's been the same problem. So I was just telling you, Kayla, that it's not the new administration or anything. It's been parent involvement in an, I've attended. Hope they'll hear, it's always been parent involvement seems to be the problem everywhere you go. And I think there's a big disconnect with parents and schools. And I think that we've been trying to, but it's really hard. So I don't know, I've gone to, you know, different schools where we've tried all kinds of different things. So we tried it at night, we tried it in the day. And those parents that are involved are going to be involved no matter what time it is, and those parents that aren't, aren't. And it's hard to figure out how you can get these parents involved, because you can jump through all these hoops, and you can do everything, and you think that the school needs to change or do different times or do these different things. But I don't know, I've always tried to figure out whether we've made home visits before. I've, I, that's the reason I even got on the board, is to try to help make a difference to get parents to want to be part of their students' education. My mom taught for 30 years, and that's the problem they deal with in Nevada, Utah, everywhere my family lives. So I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I've made home visits and invited them. I taught, I coached basketball at Meadows, thinking I could get to know the students and parents better and make them feel more welcome. No, no, it's just a really hard thing that I don't know if we can, what we can do if we need to, like, make a list of goals, of ways that we can make them feel welcome. At the end of the day, it's, I, I think it's really hard to get that mindset to people. Either education's really important to you, and you're going to be super involved with your children. And I don't think that education isn't important to them. Usually, they're working two jobs. Like I said, I raised a boy from Meadows that lives here, like, lives at my house. And grandma is raising all of her grandchildren, and her daughter's in prison. I mean, there's just, she couldn't be involved. So I think there's lots of circumstances like that, that we have a small enough district that maybe we get more involved and find out why they can't come, and maybe offer babysitting at things. I don't know, like, that's something I think we need to really look into because it's not that they don't want to be involved, it's not that they don't value education. Because I remember the first time I took Jose, the grandma cried, and she's like, I have no pride. I want everything to, I want to give everything to my grandson, but I just can't. I don't have any way to do it for him. So I'm not saying let's take in these children every time, but I think that if we got to really know each one of their situations, that we can maybe somehow find a way to make them feel loved and needed and help them get involved. I don't know, just a thought.
So I'm going to jump in for a second, because I, I appreciate the conversation where you're working right now. Here's one of the things that, we, yes, I apologize, because we're doing this thing distance. And if we were together, we'd have more time, we could do a couple more models and make more sense for you. I love the conversation that you're having. And this is typical of every board I've ever worked with. We tend to want to problem solve. That's why you get on the board. You want to solve some of these problems. And we tend to want to problem solve immediately. I'm going to say, slow down a second. You're having a in-the-weeds conversation about one particular item? I'm going to pull you back before you go there, before you start to problem solve about the parents. I'm going to say, hey, hey, hang on, we'll get there. That's, again, you're doing the smart work. Don't do the smart work yet. I want you to stay with the healthy. I want to know, does this model make sense to you? Right? And if, if you're making the model make sense by saying, for example, with our parents, that's one thing. But to actually go down and start doing the problem solving of the parents, I'm going to say, wait, 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 wait. Don't do that yet. We'll get there, trust me. But today, I want to know if this model makes sense to you. So just talk to me a little more, well, talk to me, I did it. So just talk a little more about the model itself. Does this model make sense? Because this is going to be one of the more important ones. Again, the board I worked with last night, I was with them Tuesday night and Thursday night. And for them, as they started to do the actual work, the problem solving, like you were just, they made so much more sense out of this, and they were able to refer to it as well as the healthy culture. And they started connecting some dots. And again, that's where the board member ended up saying, I've been on this board for five years. Best conversation we've ever had during that five-year time. So don't problem solve yet, talk some more about the model. Does the model make sense? Because that's a critical part for Amy and I.
Well, personally, thinking smart, healthy, you know, skill set, mindset, you know, the, the slides that we've been seeing. I think when we talk about skill set, you know, and, and, and every department, the teachers, we have very good teachers, you know, very good support staff, the skill is there. The mindset, I think, is, is kind of where we, I feel we need to work. I'm speaking for myself, I'm a numbers person. So to me, everything is, it's black or white, you know? I have the skill set to run the numbers, to run the budget, to, you know, my skill set is there. I, I do acknowledge that my mindset, you know, sometimes I have to work on, on that area because, like I said, to mirror things black and white. And sometimes I need to understand that, you know, it's okay to be in the gray, in, in, in the gray area. So I, and I think that comes with, with everyone. Because like I said, we know we have good teachers, we have good, good support staff. The, the skills are there, it's just the mindset, you know? I think it's where we kind of have to, to put a little more work and effort into that. And when we talk about smart and healthy, you know, I think that putting a, a vision, establishing a goal and, and to which we're all committed, teacher, staff, support staff, administration, you know, that, that, that mindset would be easy, easier rewired as per se, because we're all, you know, kind of running towards the same goal that it'd be easy to remember, okay, you know, this is where we want, let's not forget our goal, or let's not forget the finish line, so that we kind of, kind of reroute ourselves or rewire ourselves when our, when our mindset is kind of wandering off another direction, if that makes sense.
I think that if we're going to make a difference, it all boils down to accountability. We all need to know where our role is. That means classified, certificated parents. Once we know where our role is, I think that we can use this chart to make those changes. But we need to engage everybody to see what their needs are. Parents can come and may not be able to come when we set the meetings, but we can tie them into a performance, and we give premise here. There's different ways, but this is a, a good chart to work with. But to me, accountability is the most important thing, because I feel that not everybody wants to be accountable. And, and our, our measure is student success. If our student's success, our numbers go up, that means we have done our job. If our numbers are not changing, we're going down instead of up, then we need to change, we need to make changes. So accountability is one of my main forces, is student success.
And B, I'm going to say that it sounds to me like when you're describing the, the knowing your roles, et cetera, that's that part where an adaptive behavior requires some learning. And let's be honest, it's going to require a little bit of learning, and then try and figure out how do you do the stuff you talked about. Anyway, anyone else? We have time for one more.
I think we, oh, yes, go ahead, sir.
Well, one, one thing that I, I really like is moving on that we're using our policies and procedures to guide us more, instead of, you know, doing, doing what past administrations or past board directors before. I think that's, that's going to, if we adapt our behavior towards following the policies and procedures, I think we're, we're going to head in a better direction.
Perfect, thank you. And Ernesto, since you were jumping in there, go right ahead. Share what you were going to go ahead and talk about.
I thought if we strive to change in, strive to change our, our, our board director mentality as a whole, that might constitute a collective will. And in that, I think we can reduce the weight on the administration per se, and also the employee turnaround, if that also is a factor by establishing our core values. But the core values have to come directly from our foundation. What exactly do we stand for? You know, what do we mean to our public, to our stakeholders? What do we mean to them? How are we viewed? Does it even matter that we're there? Do they even care that we serve for them? Do they even want us to serve there? That's also a big issue, because the reason I say that is for more than one reason. And the primary reason is, you see, the reason behind all of this momentum is the student. It just boils down to the student. And I, and I see some of your heads shaking because that is correct. There is no reason for us to exist per se in our career, in our development, in what we're doing here, in the patterns, in the strategic that we put together and set forth for, as learning patterns. If they, if they weren't for the, the desire to have our students achieve that higher level of education that we so much care for. That's the reason I joined. I wanted to make sure that our students, not just at Meadows, but as students as a whole, are acknowledged. I love the fact that I see when a student is, is, is awarded something minute, if you will, but he was given something for his achievement. And that is, as I said before, that begins to set a good pattern in motion. A good pattern in motion with new habits. This new board that we have together now has new habits, now has a new vision, now has a new target. Not that we didn't before, but we must embrace not just the brand newcomers, but everyone thinking alike, thinking one strategic move. And I believe that we've got that. I believe that we have that. And that's, that's, to me, that's something to applaud for.
Thank you for sharing that. So I'm going to add one final thing to this. Every now and then folks look at me sometimes, I get folks who'll ask, or just say, you know, I, I just don't think adaptive behavior is all that important. We actually had a client one time who said, who had a very thick book and said, what, Mike and Amy, what we'd like you to do is design a training for us so we can help our, our people, our board of directors across the western half of the United States, help them understand how their behavior should match what's in the book. So Amy and I did that. We wrote up a manual, we're walking them through the tech, the, the adaptive behaviors- So Amy and I did that. We wrote up a manual that we're walking them through the tech, the, the adaptive behaviors part of it. When we turned it back into the client, the client said, wait a minute, there's a lot of stuff here. You want them to do some things? Why don't you just shorten it and tell them what it is that we already told them in this big giant book? And they're like, wait a minute, let me help you understand something you must be missing here. Um, in order to get a driver's license, you must have technical assistance, you must have knowledge, you must have skills. Fair enough, right? You gotta do some, at least we hope, right? It doesn't always look like that when folks are out driving on the road. So if you have driven, I can know down there in in SoCal, you're, you're spending a little bit of time on highway eight, interstate eight, right? And some of the others down there. Up here, we've got I eighty, which apparently interstate eighty is the minimum speed. Eighty miles an hour, right? It's supposed to be sixty-five. It's seventy in a couple spots, but no one does that, right? Everybody has skill, everybody has knowledge, they already have like, and that, no one does it until you see that officer, that trooper. On the side of the highway sitting out there, and he's standing outside with his radar gun, driving, aiming at people that go by. Suddenly, everybody's got ten and two, hands on the steering wheel like you're supposed to. Uh, I, I put my sandwich down, I put my drink down, I put my phone down, I don't know what I'm driving with. But all of a sudden, everything gets sat down, I'm holding on to the wheel, and now I'm complying. My behavior matches my knowledge. Uh, so wait a minute, just because I tell you, doesn't mean that you're going to do, right? And I think Ernesto, you're absolutely correct. This is this thing about collectively, what are you defining as a group? Because that's where you start to hold each other accountable, is that this is what we said we want to do, so now we gotta hold each other accountable. That's where Amy and I like to play, is how do, we give you permission to hold each other accountable, because when you are modeling this. It's amazing how the rest of the district starts to follow along with you. It's about board and superintendent together. That Lighthouse study, they also figured out the number one impact on student achievement. Up or down is a board and superintendent relationship. That when the real board is struggling with the relationship with the superintendent, and you've already mentioned several superintendents in a short amount of time. When that happens, student achievement also struggles. It suffers the most, the most, more than anything. According to their research, more than the teacher, more than the parent, because you don't have control over parents. You have some control over teachers, not as much as you'd like to have sometimes. Um, but the one thing you have control over, relationship with the superintendent. Right? And that that is about adaptive behaviors and how do we just make things work? It'll require some experimenting, some progress. We're gonna do great in some cases and others, not so much. So keep that in mind as we move forward. So we're gonna cover a couple more things. And then I'm trying to hit the break. Um, you know, I'm looking at ten. Uh, we might be taking a break in about seven minutes. Amy's trying to figure out what I'm talking about. She's back here pushing buttons and trying to move dials and things. And I never follow the script. She, she gets a little distracted, distracted by me because I'm the attention deficit kid. I'm the, I'm the definition of attention deficit. Your joke is, how many attention deficit kids does it take to screw in a light bulb? Who cares? Have you seen my bike? Alright, so anyhow, uh, that's my little attention deficit joke for the day. So she's not sure what I got going on, but there's a break about to happen, is what I'll tell you that, okay? So we can all go do whatever you need to get more drinks or whatever. Uh, so again, I'll wrap real quickly, because then we're gonna come back and, uh, we do have to pick up the pace. So board service, when, here's where Amy and I are gonna start to head now. When you join a board, what you're really saying is that you agree to put your personal interests and ambitions in the background. Everything you are all talking about tells me you get this intuitively. We don't need to spend a lot of time with this. Thank you. You're there to serve the best interest of this organization, and that is everything you have been defining and talking about. We can move through this part rather quickly. Alright, and then the next thing we talk about is this notion of technical assistance. We don't spend a lot of time here, but this is technical assistance. Duty of care, duty of obedience, duty of loyalty. Oh, by the way, you've already been mentioning elements of this. Duty of care just simply means show up prepared, read your board packet. Do whatever you need to do in advance. The old days, before technology, where everybody had a laptop at the meeting. You, we used to walk in with these big packets of paper. Remember those things? Oh, so, so last century, right? And so walk in and you can, you would know if somebody wasn't prepared, because they go. And you hear, look, everyone would look at them like, whoa, are you reading that now? Alright? I used to just be a joker and I'd show up to the CSBA board meeting and I'd open mine really loud, just to get a reaction. Uh, but it's that thing of show up prepared, alright? Duty of obedience. I think, uh, Robert, I I, I wanna say, Robert, I think you mentioned it, that we're following, you're following your own rules now. Uh, that you have set in place. I think that you were talking about that. Um, and that is, whatever your rules are, follow them. It, it makes it so much easier for everybody else to understand how the system operates. Again, I see boards from time to time. You are not this board, but I do see boards every now and then where people have been honest and go, well, I don't like these rules. I got on this board because, like, yeah, don't do that, right? Well, I'm, I'm a, I'm a board member, I can do whatever I want. Yeah. Don't do that. So you're, you guys are doing fine. Duty of obedience is your rules, follow them. This duty of loyalty is where we want to spend most of our time. Around many voices walk in, one voice walks out. That really means is you are all individuals with your own thoughts as you come into the board meetings. You've got your own thoughts and perspectives. And you use, we're gonna teach you some ways around how do you have conversations so that you collectively come to a decision. And once you make that decision, you now support it as an ad, okay? But you are, if you're doing all of these things already, which you are, from what I'm hearing, then you're fine. Your technical assistance is fine to get you started. I always recommend um as a board member, because like I said, this is my eleventh year. I still keep going back for more technical assistance, because I know that I forget some of it. Right? If I'm scared to go take the driver's license test right now, I don't know if I'm going to, you go take that test twenty years later. You can't look around like, I think I'm supposed to do, uh, what am I do? Yeah, so I'm, I I want to be refreshed from time to time, because again. Student achievement is critical, that I don't just kind of ride on my coattails and go, well, I learned it ten years ago, I'm golden. No, things change. So I do recommend that. But Amy and I, again, we're gonna spend a lot of our time today, talking about this duty of loyalty, and many voices walk in and one walks out. So here's what I'm going to say. We're gonna pause right here, and I'm gonna say, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. President, if you mind, if we take a ten minute recess? Because it is your meeting, not ours, we're just guests here. Um, because when we come back, I want to jump into an activity. That talks about how do you have this thing, all conflicts exist in the absence of a good conversation. Uh, how do you do good conversations? Uh, and there's a, there's some work around that. So if, with your permission, Mr. President, I'd love to offer a ten minute break so everybody can go take care of bio's needs and waters and food. By the way, you're welcome to eat in front of us. We don't take you personal. Take care of your needs at all times. So, Mr. President, with your permission, a ten minute break perhaps?
Yes, you have my permission.
Uh, thank you very much. So a two minute recess, everyone, we'll be, we'll get started again, and I'll make not the noise so you have a three minute warning. It's, you're always clear with me, Dad, I didn't ask. Like, oh, carry on, hey? Uh, then there's level five. It says level five, we're starting to get closer to real listening. He says level five is where it's a little dangerous, because we'll listen and respond with something we have in common. He says, where we usually go wrong with this one, where we struggle. Is when um certain situations, it's not appropriate. For example, if someone has just lost a dear family member. And someone says, you know, I just lost my grandfather, meant the world to me, and I'm struggling with it right now. If someone turns to that person and says, oh, I know how you feel, I've lost my grandfather too. Two things that Covey talks about is a warning. He says, one, um, no, you don't know how that person feels. You may have an idea or a sense of or appreciation for it, but that doesn't mean that you actually know how they feel. And the other thing he says was dangerous about that, that comment, is that when we start to compare, is that it literally takes the spotlight off of that person. In that moment of grief, and it now redirects the spotlight towards you. And it says, yeah, I know you got something, but let's talk about me now. He says, that's where it's kind of dangerous. You gotta be mindful of that one. But he says, level six. This is what we refer to as true listening. Listening and asking questions. That allow you to understand more. Sometimes I've seen people listen and ask a question, because it is their way to go back to number two. And create a pause from that other person, so that they now have a chance to jump in and prove their brilliance, right? And so it says, really, true listening happens when you're at level six, where you're listening and you're asking a question, you're trying to understand what the other person says. And if you'll notice, it doesn't say anything about responding. It just says, listening and asking a question. So here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna give you a chance now. We're gonna put you back in your breakout group, where we just had you in. And we're gonna practice level six listening. And the way it works is very simple. Uh, again, if Amy and I were the two that were in our, our breakout group and we were having a conversation. What I'm gonna ask you to do now is of the things on your list that you just shared, I'm gonna say, pick one. What's the one thing that if you could do it, it was the only thing you could do on that list that you just shared? What's the one thing and what's the reason why? Now, here's what I've seen happen before. So I had a, uh, one of my good buddies was doing this work, and he tells the story that when he got to this point. That one of the young ladies in their group, they had about a hundred or so students in the gym, and they were paired off, and he happened to be near these two young ladies that were talking. Uh, and one of them said, someday I want to have a mansion with fifty rooms and all the money I would need to run that, to, to, to take care of that. And then they kept going back and forth, back and forth. Then it comes to the point where he says, so what I want you to do is pick one, and I want you to tell the story, why is that important to you? Said the story for the young lady, she was explaining that um she was a foster care student. And she was in her third placement in that school year. He said this happened around uh early November. Right? And so you figure school starts in August to November. She is now in her third placement. And for her, she said, the reason, and she was telling the story, she said, the reason she wanted to have that foster care, or this fifty room mansion with all the money she needed to run it. Is because if anyone was a foster care student in her area that she got wind of it, they were done. They moved to her place, you're not moving anywhere else. You're now home. And that was part of her story around it. So here's what's gonna happen. We're gonna send you back into your small groups, into your breakout rooms with you, when paired up again. And what we're gonna ask you to do is pick one thing. Amy now gets one full minute, so I'm gonna ask you to be timers, okay? So when you get into the room, quickly, you got five seconds, decide, I'll be your timer. That's it. Just decide, who's gonna be the timer. And the way it works is very simple. Timer simply says, ready, set, go. I would say, Amy, ready, go. And I'd set the timer for one minute. Amy is the only one who gets to talk now for one minute between the two of us. She is now going to tell me why that one thing is critically important to her. I get to do two things, keep track of time, and if she stops talking before the one minute is up. I will ask her more questions about it. So tell me a little more about why that is important to you and where that came from. Again, notice, I'm listening and I'm asking her a question about it, only if she stops talking before the one minute is up. When the time is up, whoever's keeping time, you'll simply say, okay, that's time. And then you will follow it with the script that I have given you right here on this, on this page, which is to simply say, I would look at Amy and I would say, so Amy. If I hear you correctly, that is important to you because, and then I fill in the blank. In as small a space as possible. I don't want to repeat everything she just said for one minute. I want to give it to her in fifteen seconds or less. And I would just simply say, so Amy, if I hear you correctly, that's an important goal to you, because you understand what it's like to not have a place to be and to be moving consistently like that. And you just want to make a safe place for everybody to land if they are a foster care student. Amy will respond with one of two things. She will either say, yes, you've heard me correctly, done. She doesn't get to expand on it anymore. She just simply says, yes, you've heard me correctly, and she's done. Or Amy will say, no, let me clarify, and then she'll clarify, and then she's done. In other words, I'll do it one more time. I would say, Amy, one minute, go. She tells me all of her reasons why that is the one thing that's on her list that must happen. And I follow it with, time is up. If I hear you correctly, Amy, that's important to you, because she will then say, yes, you've heard me correctly. At that moment, we switch. It is now my one minute. Otherwise, she would say, no, let me clarify. She would clarify, and then we switch. Does that make sense? So one person's on the hot seat at a time, and you'll follow it simply with, if I hear you correctly, yes, you've heard me correctly. So I'm gonna have Amy set the clock for four minutes, right? So it's again, we're gonna, a hard yank at four minutes, so stay focused on that clock. That's why I said, one of you is gonna be the timer for one minute. And then you'll just do the, yes, you've heard me correctly, or no, let me clarify, and then switch, because we want you to finish your conversation. Because at four minutes, we're gonna pull you back in here. If you're done, just relax and enjoy whatever random conversation you're having. You can go in deeper with each other. And then wait for that four minutes, we'll pull you back in. So, uh, if there are no questions. Alright, well then, Amy, if you'll go ahead and put them back in those groups. Ready, set, go.
So Robert, you wanna talk about the Bahamas?
Yeah, I am muted. Um, I guess what I would, um, what I want, really would want is to, you know, clean my, my house, my yard. Uh, not because of me, but because my wife's benefit more than. And also my kids, and I, and and I would like to maybe uh do some, uh, I don't, um. Some landscaping area where we can have a um family reunion, so maybe, maybe cook a, maybe uh. Make one of those pizza ovens or something. Cook some pizzas, learn to cook pizzas, because I don't have any idea how to do it. Um, you know, it's the, e- everything to that effect, I mean, uh, enjoying my, more my house. Um, traveling is good, but I, I guess, uh, rest, uh, the house is where you rest, really rest. Um, that's it.
So if I hear you correctly, you would like your house to be a place of gathering for the family that you love?
Yes.
Yes. And I'm glad that you're thinking about doing that while you're young, because now, we would have liked to have done that, but now we. Uh, are too old to do it. And we want to go to our kids' house instead of them coming here. So I applaud you for wanting to do that. That's, that's awesome, awesome. Okay, so the reason I want a smaller house is I'm tired of cleaning up. My four kids are gone, but my husband messes this house up as much as all four of those kids used to. So I want to confine him to like a twelve by twelve area. That he can mess up as much as he wants. And I'll leave it alone. That's why I want a smaller house.
It's all about your husband?
Yes. Isn't it funny how we want to please the other one more than ourselves? Pretty interesting. Remind me, how many kids you have, Robert? Three?
Oh, two of them.
Oh, two.
Two, yes. Yes, um, we're going off subject, but um, you know, two. One, one's graduating from Meadows this year, so he's uh kind of excited on, on uh what classes to take in high school. I guess he's gonna have a um, some kind of class or uh with counselors. Or, or, I don't know if it's a counselor or a school teacher, but he wants to just, uh, he's. I, I guess he's been placed uh with um very artistic on his uh. Uh, intellect, uh, I don't know, this taste testing.
Achievement test, yeah.
Likes, uh, he likes that, but for some reason, uh, uh, he doesn't want to do that. Wants to be either a, uh, an engineer or, or a. Or a realtor, like her mom.
Oh, so you guys have been very good examples to them, him, about how happy you are in your jobs.
Yes, and and I, I, I keep telling him, uh, it's a, um, those substitute tests uh change.
Yes.
With the stain of mind, so.
Yes.
You back at one time and you made, uh, I mean, I, I took it like four times in my whole life and. Uh, you went from being a cop to a doctor to um, to, to an engineer, an architect, I think, and then engineer. And it, it just changes with the attitude that you have at that particular day.
Well, then you start to see your strengths.
Yes, uh-huh, yes.
And you see how you can handle that job. Cop, I couldn't handle, I'm, I'm afraid. Too afraid. Did he, was he on the, on that parent, parent meeting they had last night, where they were talking about the AP classes?
Oh, no, it was just me.
Oh, oh, it was really, really good. It's too bad. But he's a freshman, he's got lots of time. They start most of those classes in juniors.
Alright, everybody is back. So here's what I will do. Um, nice, nice job. I don't even know what your conversations are like, but I'm gonna go ahead and say, nice job, because you, you all made it back in here. So you did fantastic, right? You get an A for me. So here's what I want to talk about a little bit, right? So here's what was just happening. Um, I want to talk you through this right hand side of the slide, right? Where it talks about dialogue. Dialogue is this thing that happens. Dialogue is this thing that happens within conversations where it's really, um, and, and, and let me back up for a second. Dialogue and discussion are two tools, two different types of communication. And I'm gonna walk you through how they show up and what they look like. What we just walked you through was an example of dialogue. Dialogue is this thing where I, I, I like to jump down into this notion, right here where it talks right off the bat. It moves beyond any one individual's understanding. Um, and we're not trying to convince others of our point of view. There's no emphasis on winning, right? Um, and it's this interesting thing. Dialogue is what Stephen Covey refers to as just simply listening, so you understand it. And I always say, you were listening so well that you feel like you could write a book about that person's life. So imagine that, uh, Robert, I'm interviewing you and you're telling me all about whatever your, your thing is around the house and really understanding the, the significance for you. If I'm listening at level six, I should understand what you're saying so well that I could actually write that story about it, I should be able to write about it and have it represent your thoughts, not mine, right? It's literally just your thoughts. And so that's what dialogue is. The challenge with dialogue is that it's not about winning, not about right. So when I go back to this notion of, of, of the next two weeks, the conversations around whether it's gonna be the Chiefs or the Buccaneers who are gonna win the Super Bowl. It, it goes back and it goes forward and everything else. And it literally has nothing to do with me saying, so Robert, help me understand why you are choosing the Bucks. So tell me about that. And now I just sit and I listen. Now, that's not how that conversation happens. That one is more about discussion. Now here's what's up interesting about discussion. Discussion is this thing that it's really around advocating and telling. Uh, we get into this thing where I'm just gonna tell you what I think. And if you don't like it, that's your problem. And off we go to the races. I think the Bucks are gonna get killed because, and now I just started listing stuff off. And what's interesting, if you ever see two people in a discussion, you can always tell. Um, as a matter of fact, if you think, not, again, I've never watched Jerry Springer, but I hear rumor that if, on the Jerry Springer Show, you know when the fight's about to happen because the body language really starts to change. People start to lean forward in their chair, they start to slide out of the seat. And that's when they show the, the bodyguards on the side of the stage. Well, they start moving their way out because they can see these behaviors starting moving on. Where people start to move a little bit more and they get a little more excited. Um, and it's really about telling, selling, persuading. I'm trying to convince you of something. And it's really around justifying assumptions, right? These are assumptions. Now, here's what I always tell folks. The dialogue is the one that as a board, I believe, has the most value. It doesn't mean I don't understand discussion. Dialogue means I'm asking questions. And that if I'm asking questions, it moves us to the point where we are going, getting away from competition and we're starting to become collaborative. There's a whole nother hour and a half we could do on the concept and what's the, the mechanism behind it. I'm gonna shorten that for you and just simply say that if you're asking questions of each other, regardless of what the difficult conversation is, if you're asking and trying to understand it, it leads to collaboration and you're able to make better decisions. Here's what I mean by that. We have been having difficult conversations, in my opinion, since cavemen were around. I, I, I honestly believe this. I think that someone, whether they were all inside of the cave, the weather was like what we've been having up here the last couple of days. It was horrible, raining sideways. And they all went into the cave and they were sitting around the fire and someone went, woo, fire. This has been the greatest invention. So someone on the other side of the cave looked up and they went, you kidding me? You know that, those two brontosaurus's that we just brought into the cave on the wheel? The wheel is the greatest invention. And they're like, no, it's the fire, the wheel. And off to the races we went, okay? So the interesting thing about difficult conversations, they've been around forever. But they're, but they're difficult because people don't understand the skillset around what it takes to truly collaborate. Level six is dialogue. It's marked because we're asking questions. Not asking a question so that I can now prove to you how brilliant I am. But I'm asking a question because I genuinely sincerely am listening and I need clarification. That's it. It's about clarification and just understanding it. It's not about listening so I can respond. It's listening so I understand. Discussion is about advocacy. I need to advocate. So let me help you understand why I think these are both two wonderful tools, but we don't use them correctly. Dialogue is how we get together in order to make a decision. I don't know what the decision is, but it's a collective decision. So I need to just understand how you feel about something, Robert. So I can get a sense of where we do have some common ground, where we are in agreement with each other. Discussion is advocacy. When we've made the decision, haha, now I need to go out and explain to everybody why we made that decision collectively. Something about this thing is that discussion is marked by, when you, you'll know you're involved in discussion because you'll hear people say, yeah, but, yeah, yeah, however. It's like that you just wanna rebut each other, alright? Yeah, but the, but the Buccaneers, their quarterback is ancient. He's been around since before dinosaurs. Yeah, but, you're guys, you're not, and we go back and forth. And we never really land on agreements. Dialogue is this thing, it's marked by words. You'll hear people say things like, you know, I agree with that specific point of something you were saying, you were sharing, and I wanna add this to it. The reason I put in here, I feel ya, is I was doing this with a student one time. And I said, you know, dialogue is, you'll know because you're dialoguing with people, you'll find yourself saying, I appreciate, I agree, I respect, and they'll follow the conversation. And this young man looked at me and he said, Mr. Walsh, those words don't sound like me. Alright, well, how would you, how would you signify to somebody that you are listening, you hear them and you understand? You don't necessarily agree with them, but you understand where they are. He said, I feel ya. I was, okay, well, brother, you have my permission, say, I feel ya. Whatever it is for you that rings true, if you're just letting somebody know, I get it. I understand how you feel. In the moment where we're trying to create dialogue, that's about asking questions and understanding. And discussion comes after you've made the decision. And now you need to go out and advocate and explain. Again, that many voices walk in. And when you walk out, how do we walk out as one voice so that we can now advocate? When I was the president for CSBA, I was very clear with the delegates. We are going to have vigorous dialogue on a lot of things that are important for students. I want open, honest conversation. But when we're done, I've gotta go stand in front of a microphone. I've gotta go stand in front of a camera. I've gotta go sit on a radio show and I've gotta defend. I have to advocate for what it is that we've decided as an association that will better move school districts forward to help kids, blah, blah, blah. So I'm gonna pause for a second. I wanna ask you to just talk about, alright, this is where Mike and Amy disappear again. But I just want you to talk about, what is this concept of dialogue and discussion? How do you see it playing out as a board? How do you see it? What, you make sense out of what I've been talking about while I go into silence. So someone go first, whoever's talking about it again, just. Muted myself before it's finished. Make sense out of these two slides. So again, I'll just, I'll go back and forth between the slides as you're talking. Dialogue and discussion, advocacy, inquiry. So now I will go back to mute in Utah.
Are you there, Robert? Or are we talking to everybody? Oh, everybody.
Everybody.
I think we do this. I think as, as the five of us, six of us, actually, uh, I think we do this. What specifically is, are you the advocate or the inquiry?
I think he wants us to make sense of each, each, uh, each, uh, each of these frames. Uh, so either you do a dialogue by inquiry or you do a discussion by advocating.
So which one do you think we do the most?
I, I think in my particular case, we advocate a lot. Um, we really agree on a lot of things. We try to persuade each other to make things happen. We try to justify why it is we are defending your assumption, my assumption, the group's assumption, what it is that, you know, sends a meaningful, a message. Um, and if something feels like it says fright, but we try to put it together with our own beliefs, our own thoughts. And then we pitch in our own two cents worth so that we can find position in, you know, in, in our conversation. And that's, that's, that's how I feel on that.
And I feel we do it through inquiry, cuz if, uh, we have questions regarding material, we try to get clarification to make the correct decision. So that we, at least I, I think, uh, when I ask a question is because I, I don't understand something. And maybe other board members might not understand the same thing that I'm understanding. So if you ask a question, you get clarification.
So I'd have to say inquiry also, except sometimes I come in with a, someone else's point of view. Like if I've talked to a teacher or, uh, so I've come in with their point of view. But then I find out that I don't have all of the information. So inquiry is probably where I think we go with it. And that's why it's so easy for us to walk out in agreeance. I, I always appreciate, um, like Ms. Rodriguez would always make the questions and, and, um, you know, start with, with, uh, the dialogue as to, okay, why, you know, this happened and, and ask questions a lot. And, and I appreciate that because that keeps us involved in the dialogue to get to an agreement. And sometimes, you know, it's even prior to a meeting or, you know, it's just when you notice, uh, something and, and, or something comes up in the agenda or whatnot. Um, or, or anything, any concerns from, from parents or, or teachers. It really comes across as, as, as an inquiry more than anything. And then, uh, we come together for, for a decision. And I love Ms. Ms. Rodriguez is always making that comment at the end. And I, I'm just one person with an, you know, with an opinion, but it's about all of us being together in, in the decision.
Let me, let me change the question for a second, cuz I'm kinda curious. I like the conversation you're having, but I'm kinda curious. You've got parents, we've got, you talk a lot about the parents in the past already. But you have parents or someone who comes in and they're unhappy about something. Let me ask you this. I'm now the principal, I'm the person in charge. Veronica has pulled up an elbow muscle. And so she's, oh, my elbow, and she's out for now. And I accidentally walk into the room for the next four hours. I'm the principal in charge. And there are three parents who are lined up outside who wanna have a conversation with me one at a time. Which tool would you like for me to use with them when they come in to talk about their challenges in life? Do you want me to use discussion or dialogue with those parents and why? Show of hands, how many of you say, Mike, in that moment, we would like you to use dialogue? Raise your hand.
Dialogue.
Alright, you got four of you? No, Mike, when those parents come in, we want you to use discussion and advocate. Raise your hand.
Not really sure.
Okay, just give your, good, I like that, that's an answer too. Alright, so that honesty is what I'm looking for. Thank you so much. So let me go ahead and do this. When you were having your conversations with each other, how many of you felt, how many of you appreciated that when you were sharing your story, you were heard? Raise your hand if you just noticed the difference in that. I appreciate if like they just listened to me. So raise your hands, okay, good. Now think about that, as the parent who comes in and I, I'm upset about something. Um, which tools? Because this right here, level six, dialogue. I'm just listening and understanding. And what that tends to lead to in dialogue is that people become less defensive. What discussion tends to do is bring around more defensiveness. Because by definition and discussion and advocacy, I now need to, um, I need to justify. I have to defend, it's built into the conversation. I have to defend my assumption. And when I defend it, I don't care what you have to say about it, I defend it. Think about religion, right? These topics that we're not supposed to talk about, difficult conversations. Don't talk about religion, don't talk about politics, don't talk about abortion. All of those things are difficult conversations. And typically, it's because I feel like I must defend my belief about religion. I was raised a Seventh Day Adventist, so don't, please don't knock on my door and tell me why I should not be a Seventh Day Adventist. What? Why I shouldn't? Let's talk, right? It's never, golly, gosh, tell me more. It's usually, no, no, let me explain to you. And this gene comes up. What I've never had anyone say to me before is I was so outraged when I went in to talk to that person and they just listened. And they asked me some questions to make sure that they understood me. I walked out of there more outraged. What I've always heard from people is they say, I don't know what it was, but they just listened. And I feel so much better. Dialogue is the one that I would argue, is the one that if you're really trying to figure out, how do you solve a problem? How do you come to an agreement? It's about dialogue. And I think when you, it, it, you don't have to look much further than what's going on in the, in the national, in this national conversation, the dialogue that we have across the nation. It's not a dialogue. It's really, we're at that point where we're just yelling over the top of each other, right? Just had the holidays. Did anybody bring up during the holidays? I mean, any family that did show up? Did any of you talk about, um, politics, right, right, left? Any of you, how many of you were smart enough to avoid those conversations during the holidays, right? It's because they turn into a discussion. It just becomes an, yeah, and it just becomes an argument about which side was right and which side was wrong and who stormed what and who shouldn't have. And it just spins out of control because it leaves people wanting to defend, I wanna defend my beliefs. It's not about right or wrong, good or bad, I just need to defend it. But if I ask somebody, hey, tell me something, how do you feel about, fill in the blank? And now I stop talking and I just listen? This is amazing thing that starts to happen. I get to learn, I get to hear. And part of the reason why I like to talk about that is, this is one of the few memes on Facebook I've ever seen that I thought was one hundred percent accurate. Tell me, how many times have you seen people on Facebook have one of those conversations? And when they're done, they look at each other and go, oh my goodness, I see the light. I've been wrong all these years. I now changed my mind. It, it, it just never happens. As a matter of fact, what it leads to is that red dot of no one changes anything and everyone is just angry and get out. Right? It just, and the volume goes up and up and up. No one's making a collective decision where they're going, you know what? We are now more unified than ever. As a matter of fact, we're the opposite. Everybody talks about, we're more polarized than ever. It's cuz we jump in and defend our, our statements and we defend and defend. So one of my favorite, um, one of the people I love to quote in this conversation is this gentleman here on the right. That is Richard Klepler. He is the CEO of HBO, so Home Box Office and everything else. And I was watching a Ted Talk, or not, sorry, not a Ted Talk, but a Goldman Sachs interview. And they were talking to him about his philosophy. And they asked him about this notion around dialogue. And, and they were saying, how do you get to the point where you've got all these incredible minds who are really, they're, they're powerful thinkers on their own? How do you get them to land on something where you all can agree and move forward on these decisions? And he just said, this was his belief. In order to nurture honest conversations, you as a leader have to believe, I don't have to be right at the beginning of a meeting as long as HBO is right at the end of the meeting. And he said, the reason that he does that is he wants to encourage open dialogue. He actually used the term dialogue. And I stopped for a second, I was like, wait a minute, there's somebody that understands dialogue. Dialogue says that I already have my mind made up sometimes. I have an opinion. I mean, I don't have one. It just simply means, I'm already clear about why I feel the way I feel. What I need to do is spend some time asking B, so B, help me understand a little more about that. Why do you feel that way? And I turn and I go, well, Robert, so I wanna know a little more about that. Ernesto, help me understand why you feel the way you feel about, and I'm asking. And what starts to happen is, he says that when they are engaged in vigorous dialogue, uh, what happens is it becomes clearer about what we agree on so that we can make a decision collectively. This, so we make the decision because now I have a better understanding about how you feel about why you're thinking that way. And it may be something I hadn't even considered, at which point I will suddenly go, oh, I get it, Ernesto. I, I see what you're saying. I think we need to keep that in mind as we move forward on this resolution or on this decision that we're about to make. Talked about dialogue. And that's really what Stephen Covey talks about, is that this dialogue, this notion of how do we increase dialogue in all of our difficult conversations is really important. Because he says, when you have that dialogue, it really takes all the defensive, not, defensiveness out of it. And it makes it so that we're able to cooperate, collaborate with each other and move forward on a decision. If I'm gonna hit pause again, thoughts regarding this conversation, the dialogue and discussion? Any thoughts that you've got now based on some of the further conversations? So I'll hit pause.
From my experience, um, working at a high school, um, I had the opportunity, well, I worked at the main office. So parents would come in upset and, um, to be the first one in the office when they walked in. And, um, so I would walk up to them and I would go, good morning or good afternoon. And so I would walk up to them and I would go, good morning or good afternoon. How can I help you? And they would come in angry and I said, well, tell me what you need. Or what is your problem? And I said, that way I can direct you to the right person. By the time I got finished walking with them, they had calmed down and I would take them to the right person. So dialogue, just acknowledging that they're there and they're angry, kind of calms them down.
Good, someone else, share what you're thinking. Wait a minute, I've got a new plan. I have a new plan. You ready? You know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna put them in the breakout rooms. Woo hoo, that's right. I'm gonna put them in breakout rooms, we're gonna give them three minutes. And when you're in there, those breakout rooms, and we're gonna put everybody, let's get them away from us and put them in their own rooms. I knew that, I knew that, so I'll, well, you'll do it the way you need to. And I'll go dark, I'll disappear on the screen and you and I can both disappear. What we want you to do, because we don't want to, I always disappear because I don't want you to feel like we're eavesdropping, even though we are. I want you to have open conversation. So I'll put two different, and I'm gonna give you three minutes. And I want you to make sense out of this notion of dialogue and discussion. Have an open conversation about it, have a dialogue about dialogue and discussion. And which one do you think would benefit the board if you were to use that tool more often? Ready? So three minutes, you, you ready? Go. Soon as Amy puts you in those groups, there it is.
Hello, whose room am I in? This is Marga. I don't know, but you're with me. Oh, Kayla. There's, yeah, Daniela, Mr. Garcia. You and me.
Well, I agree that the inquiry ways go, but as you've noticed, my personality, you know, after you have to tell people one, two, three times what the rules are and they don't get it, then I get, I get a little where I'm an advocate.
You have a way of, of, of being an advocate, because you really don't come across as an advocate like right away. So you have a way to listen. You know, and, and you listen and then, you know, you, you express your thoughts. But it's really, you know, I don't see you entirely. I know that, and then that's the thing is that we're gonna say things, just like teachers, you know, we're gonna say things over and over so our students can understand.
Exactly, exactly, yes. But it's frustrating.
I think definitely is that, the, the way we come across sometimes, because we do have a belief system or thoughts and opinions and, and it really comes down to asking questions first. And so I, I, it's a balance between both. I mean, Amy says here, which one do you need to do more of dialogue or discussion? I think there's a balance, but it definitely has to start with a dialogue so we can understand, you know, the listen to understand, the level six for us to be able to have a effective discussion or, or valuable, you know, that's valuable.
One thing that, I mean, dealing, dealing constantly with contractors and questions or, I mean, things are not, sometimes don't go right on the field and they come screaming at the office and they want a solution right away. Most of the time, when, when they're mad and screaming is, is because something went wrong in their part. And they just, they just want to, want to, most of the time, they already have a solution. It's just that they're asked, they're more than likely, wanna, wanna get you on their side before, before doing the change themselves. Yeah, so that's what I noticed. So it's, it's good to hear what they're saying. And then, because most of the time, they already have a solution. May not work all the time, you may have a better solution. But after they relieve all the frustration that they're having, it's always easier for you to put your, 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 your ideas at the table and they, they, they are more willing to listen. That's, that's my, my, my impression anyway.
Well, being on this board, Robert, I don't know if you felt like I did in the beginning, but being we didn't have past knowledge of the things that had happened. I think that the parents and an actual board member came on trying to convert us to their way of thinking, knowing that we didn't know what was going on. I felt kind of dumb in the beginning. But then, once, once they were instructed how, how things are, what the rules are, then they gave up, unfortunately. And to this day, we still don't have that. We still don't have it.
My apologies, I jumped right over the top of you, Marga. So here's what I'm gonna say, so here's what I'm gonna ask you to do now. You've just had two separate conversations. I would love for you to just share, so the group that was in the room here, that with, you know, you didn't go to a breakout room. Please share your thoughts with the other group and vice versa, the group that actually went to a breakout room. Please share your best of us, so what are you, what'd you talk about? Compare notes, what do you see this thing around dialogue and discussion? Where do you see, which one do you, you want to advocate, advocate? Which one do you think you need more of in your boardroom? Dialogue, discussion, how do you see them playing out? Again, your conversation, what did the breakout group talk about? What did the non-breakout group talk about? So please share your notes across the stage with each other.
Well, I'm gonna advocate for inquiry. There you go. I would say, I mean, I, I was thinking, because the question, when Amy typed the question, which one do you want to have more of? It really made me reflect that it's, it's, I, I thought, okay, there's gotta be a balance. But I said, no, in order for it to be effective, I think that we need to start with inquiry so that we can have a, an effective dialogue. Because always we don't know where people are coming from. And we already come in with a perceived notion of something or an opinion. That's just my thought.
I agree, totally.
Mr. Garcia's comment about sometimes they already have a solution. And because we're fixers, we want to give our own thought on it. But the fact that they, if we ask questions, we're gonna get to the part, we, hopefully, we get to that part where they might even already have a solution to a concern or a problem.
When, well, when, when they, when a person is angry, they don't want to hear you. They just want to relieve all the frustration. Once they relieve their frustration, they're more, more willing to hear you. So they have ideas, they're, they'll express them when, when, with anger. Sometimes it's better just to hear them out. Then at the end, when they're calmed down, they're more willing to listen. You, you can express how, or I come up with a solution to the problem they have.
So far, the non-breakout group is winning the, the score. They have 348 points to zero. This is a good chance for the breakout group to jump in and score some points here, right? And the points have made up, they don't mean anything, but you want to get in on this conversation.
That's because we're the young quarterback, not the whole experience.
Where's my group? Did they leave me alone?
They're, they're gone back for oxygen.
Well, the, the thing, the thing about it is that people want to be heard. When they're frustrated, they want to be heard, it doesn't matter who's in front of them. But you hear them out and say, okay, you, you set them in the right direction according to our board policies. And, and if it's related to the superintendent, you, we've, you take them to the superintendent. If it's related to a teacher, they have to make an appointment to see the teacher. If it's personnel, you have to refer them to the right process. And, and I think that that has been lacking for a while. So by setting the board policies that we updated, I think that we've gone back to the right direction. Because for the longest time, and Mrs. Rodriguez can tell you that I've been fighting for the board policies to be updated for the long time. The last time it was done, it was during Mrs. Hess's tenure. And those are crucial because the laws change, rules change, and we need to update them. There's a lot of things that were dropped because of the different superintendents that we had. And I just did my tally and we had two that were here for the longest, which was Mr. Kelly and Sue Hess. And then we had one that was here for a year. Philip was here for two years. Then we had another one that was for two years and now we're down to Mrs. Rodriguez. So a lot of the things were lost. And we're updating them and bringing us up, up to date. Mr. Garcia and Mrs., I keep pronouncing her name, I should use her first name. We went to workshops and even in the, the Brown Act, even in communication between the boards, things have changed so much. You think that you've gone to one meeting, you don't have to go to them anymore. But no, it's always training, training, training. And that's what they tell me, why do you go to these things? Because every time I go, I learn something new. And so, you know, as a board member, I, I feel that I have to attend whatever training is available to me to make our school be compliant with with our board policies, with the laws, labor laws, with I lost a with our I lost it, civil laws, but anyway, we have so many laws that are involved with our, our school. But the bottom line is that we have to keep metals, our responsibility as metals, as board trustees. We have to be upfront with constituents, let them know why we can't give races or what, the things that we do, why we do them. But our priority should be student learning, student education. And that's the way I feel.
And is that, I'm gonna ask, because I think you've mentioned it, but I may have lost it as you were kind of going to, because I was also trying to figure out ed code. I think ed code
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of.
Problem solver in my head.
Ed code is so crucial.
Right, now, so what I'm gonna ask is that question again around, are you making the argument for more dialogue or the argument for more discussion in the group?
I, I think it, sometimes you can have dialogue and sometimes you can have discussion. It all depends on the topic, but I think that it varies, it varies. But to me, dialogue sometimes works best and sometimes it depends on the situation. So you could use both. I don't know where my group is.
I was just gonna say, anyone else? We have, we love that, Jim Talm. Yeah. Could you, let me ask a question. I'm, I'm having, this is the great thing that Amy and I are still trying to work out in our, our studio. We don't have the secret microphones that go just to each other, like you see on TV. I'm getting breaking news right now, so I've got to ask her a question. Because once again, I just threw her a curveball, she just gave me the, the look like, oh. All right, so you have the ability to show it, don't you? Okay, that's perfect, that's what I wanted to know. And then we'll figure out, hopefully the sound works as well. Woo hoo, this is gonna be so exciting, we're gonna try it as we go. All right, so here's what I'm gonna do. I love the conversation, we are going to play you about, I think it's seven minutes and six seconds, so I should probably stop. Let me know when you're ready for me to stop sharing. Okay, he's just got to play through the commercial. So here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna share with you a video and then we're gonna land on it, we're gonna stick the flag. You guys, your conversation's fantastic. We've got a video, we're gonna show you about seven minutes of it, we have enough time for this. And then the last couple of things we're gonna do, we are actually about 10 to 15 minutes ahead of schedule. I love that, okay? Because I always love to give the gift of time if we can. Because you're busy folks, so if we can end 15 minutes early, that's even better. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go ahead and let Amy share her screen. And then we'll close that and then I will, okay, perfect. Now, don't start it just yet. So what I'm gonna give you a little setup is this gentleman, his name Jim Talm. And he is talking to you a little bit about this notion of how do you really get beyond defensiveness and what causes it? And the cost it really has if you're not collaborative. And it's like about seven minutes or so, he will really explain this. And then we're gonna come back and talk a little bit about what he shares, as he talks about chickens, red zone and green zone. So Amy, go ahead and start it, hopefully we got volume.
I want to share something with you today that I believe will make you much more effective at resolving conflict and building collaboration. But I want to start by telling you a little story about some groups of chickens. Because believe it or not, chickens have a lot to teach us about collaboration. This takes place at Purdue University where Bill Muir is a professor of genetics and a genuinely nice guy. And Bill was looking into the differences between groups of collaborative chickens. These were just chickens that got along well with each other. I call them the green zone chickens. And there were no star performers in their group, they were just nice to each other. And in the chicken world, a star performer is the hen that lays the most eggs. But the problem with the star performers is that they tend to be much more aggressive animals. And so we oftentimes see among the chickens, something that we occasionally see in human organizations. And that is that the star performers become the stars, not by being so good themselves, but by suppressing the egg production of the other chickens. So they look better and they do this by pecking on them. Now, I call these more aggressive star performers the red zone chickens. And they do a lot of damage. So the farmers have tried different strategies to deal with that. One is to house the birds in individual cages about this big. Not a great solution because it's very expensive, takes millions of cages. Another thing they tried is something that's called trimming their beaks. Now, this is a bit of a deceptive term because it gives you the impression that there's the chicken manicurist out there sort of filing down the sharp point. But really, it's an employee with a tool that looks a little bit like a pair of pliers and they go up and rip a big chunk of the chicken's beak right off its head. Also very expensive, not to mention horribly unpleasant for all the chickens and the employee that's assigned to do that. So Bill was trying to see if it's possible to breed collaborative instincts into chickens. And if so, what would be the impact of that on their egg production? So we had all the green zone chicken groups over there and the red zone chicken groups over there. And he took the best of each generation's egg producers to produce the next generation. He did this for one year, about five generations. And at the end of that one year period, the results were pretty dramatic. There, this is a picture of the green zone chickens. They were healthy and productive. Now, the next picture is what was left of the red zone chickens. And I say it's what was left of them because more than half of the red zone chickens had been murdered by their colleagues, pecked to death. Now, they say that a picture is worth a thousand words. Doesn't tell the whole story, let's look at the egg production of the green zone chickens. In that one year period of time, it went up 260%. So what we can learn from these chickens is that red zone environments that are more hostile, that are more adversarial, highly conflicted, internally competitive versus externally competitive, they produce more red zone behavior. It feeds on itself and can spread like a virus in an organization. And green zone environments that are more supportive and cooperative and more highly skilled at collaboration, they produce more eggs or whatever your organization's equivalent is to more eggs. Think back on that picture of those red zone chickens again for just a minute, get that in your mind. As a judge for almost 25 years, my jurisdiction was collective bargaining disputes, labor management conflicts. And in that role, I believe that I have mediated more school district labor strikes than any other person in the United States. In just about every single strike that I have ever mediated, by the time we get to the end of that process, every single person involved in that process on both sides of the table knows exactly what those chickens feel like. Because that is the existence that they are trapped in. Because that is the existence that they are trapped in. Now, these are not mean people. These are good people doing their imperfect best to improve the world the best way they know how. I mean, they've all dedicated their lives to public education. They didn't lack an interest in collaboration. What they lacked was skills. And this lack of skills was costing the state of California a tremendous amount of money in the cost of conflict. So a small group of us got together, we did a lot of research, and we set out to teach the more adversarial red zone groups to be more collaborative. We were wildly successful. Trust went up, conflicts went down. We reduced the amount of measurable conflict in almost 100 different organizations by almost 70% over several years. It saved the state of California a huge amount of money. It also transformed the working lives of thousands of employees who had been trapped in that red zone chicken existence, which in turn, I believe, improved the quality of education for thousands of school kids who finally had positive role models who could teach them how to resolve their differences without destroying their community or going to war with each other. And what we learned from this experience is not just limited to public education. It is applicable in any setting that requires collaboration. Whether that's a family trying to figure out where to go on vacation together or the corporate world where it has become blindingly obvious lately that you cannot compete externally, first collaborate internally, or even in politics, where the defensiveness of our Congress probably costs as much as the entire defense budget at the Pentagon. So what I'd like to do is share with you today what I believe is the biggest learning from that experience. And that's this. There is nothing that will help you become more effective at resolving conflict and building collaboration more than better managing your own defensiveness. In over 25 years of working with other people's conflicts, I almost never had to deal with pure legal issues. People were almost always before me, because somebody would start feeling vulnerable, and then they would get defensive. And when we get defensive, our thinking becomes rigid, our IQ drops about 20 points, and we simply become stupid. And not only are we terrible problem solvers ourselves, but then we invite everybody else in the room to get defensive. And then what you end up with is a whole room filled with red zone people who cannot solve a problem. The technical term for that, by the way, is litigation. It's as simple as this. If you reduce your defensiveness, you increase your ability to solve problems. Now, if we know that's true, why don't we just stay non-defensive and keep a more collaborative green zone mindset all the time? All right, so that kind of gives you just a sense of, as he's having that conversation, the challenge with it often is the ability to stay, to avoid being defensive. So again, that tool is really around dialogue. So hear me back to you.
I shut it off.
You're not on mute. Thank you. Now, I was hearing my own self, and I don't like to hear me that much. And so really, this is this conversation again, where he talks about this in terms of the dialogue, and that it's part of how you avoid the pitfalls, if you will, around the discussion, the stuff that happens. And so, again, it kind of leads me with this notion of that really, it's the reminder to me that one of the things we're really looking at is that progress is built on relationships. You've been describing your desire to involve the families and the parents more in their children's education and decision-making. I think those are wonderful ideas. And how do you get more folks there? How do you get more people involved? Really, what you're describing is relationships, right? And that those relationships are gonna be built on conversations. And I love this last part of the quote, "Quality of conversations is determined by the time spent in dialogue." Imagine what the culture, remember, we're talking about smart cultures and healthy cultures. Imagine what the healthy culture would look like, what it would feel like if dialogue were the one thing that you used the most when you're working together to come up with a decision. And dialogue, again, is just simply, I don't want you to be defensive. I just want to ask you to help me understand. I may not agree with you, but I will at least understand and appreciate why you feel that way and be willing to make some accommodations and collaborations. So again, I'm gonna pause right here for a second. Any thoughts, anything that you're, what are you starting to really think through and recognize as we're having this conversation? Anyone care to share anything? Say that one more time, I can barely hear you.
Communication, very important.
Talk more about that.
Building a better communication with parents to see, get their input of what they feel they need. Maybe we're trying to get them in for our needs, but maybe we're not listening to their needs.
Again, don't know, but we get to find out. And the only way to find out is to inquire, ask the question. Good, I love that. Anyone else? What do you, what's clicking for you? What's starting to make sense? This is where, and again, this is what I mean by this is your conversation. Amy and I are just gonna keep drawing it out of you, because you are ultimately gonna land on how you want this board's culture to reflect. So keep talking. What else are you starting to think? What's your aha?
I'm still on the chickens. Because it really is in a, in a, like the visual really struck me, because I'm thinking, I, you know, it really becomes a literal issue when we talk about healthy. You know, it really drains you physically, mentally, emotionally if there's no, if it isn't a healthy relationship. And I'm talking across the board, whether it's within our team as a board, within, you know, the teaching and staff community, and then with students and with parents. So in order for us to maintain our minds and our health, and our bodies healthy, it really boils down to those healthy conversations, healthy. I mean, I see the red, I know you took the slide off already, but the relationships, dialogue. If you put that, you know, healthy right next to it, in order for us to have those things, I really believe in the power of relationships. But that can't happen if we don't get to understand one another, where they're coming from. And that's good done, that gets done through inquiry.
We can, okay, you were on mute for a second. I'm not sure what it took, but it was, it took a second for it to catch up.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
Oh, well, I just wanted to say, sometimes I feel bad that I don't understand the different culture, because my idea as a retired white woman is very different than a child, I mean, a parent of a child in the school, Hispanic, who understands the Hispanic language, who knows their cultures, which, you know, that's just very different for me. And that's something that I have tried to learn, because I do have, all of my children have married outside of the white race. And so black Indian children, grandchildren, and Hispanic children, and Puerto Rican grandchildren. And so that's been an eye-opener for our family, but I'm trying to make it cross over into the school system also, so that I can, I can take the time to listen and have dialogue. Maybe that shouldn't be an issue, but I think it is an issue.
I love that you shared that. Thank you for being vulnerable and going to your truth. Thank you so much. You're on mute, Ernesto. Ernesto, you're on mute.
There we are. I think the image, yes, can you hear me now? Okay. I believe that the images showed me that between the red zone and green zone, the chickens that are in the green zone are, of course, their environment is more productive. And I think that was the, that's the message that we're trying to get across, that the reds, although they're all chickens, but some don't get along, even though they're quarantined within one confined area. And again, I put that together in a sensible, in a meaningful perspective, because we are, in a way, confined to one area as a board and as an administration. If we don't get along, then we'll start picking at each other. And we don't want to do that, because then, of course, we'll become non-productive, and they'll end up trimming our peaks, beaks. And so that's what I got out of the images. Hopefully, we can get along even better and be able to be more transparent, more trustworthy within each other, and so that as a whole, we become a more productive school.
Good, thank you. Michelle, Robert, either of you. This is your board, not mine.
Well, I think conversation, having discussions, I mean, that's before, when, I guess we started, when I started on the boards, there weren't really discussions, there were more like demands, you know. There were a lot of demands, and now we finally, well, we, before COVID, we kind of turned it around to have become a board more like listeners and discussion. We did turn it around. COVID just is slowing us down. But I think we're heading in the right direction. A lot of discussion, a lot of conversations.
Good, good.
What really stuck out to me is it says "quality of conversation" is determined by time spent in dialogue. And I think sometimes I'm always like a little problem solver, because I have a large amount of children. And I'm always in this mode of solving everything, because I have seven children, and I've adopted several. And I always think like, I have to solve everything. And I think that the aha moment for me in this is that sometimes you just need to stop and listen and not have to think like, put on my like, I'm gonna solve it, I'm gonna, you know, like, quality of conversation is spent in dialogue. So it's the time that I spend actually listening, not talking, listening, and really understanding where they're coming from, what their needs are, and trying to help them get in that right direction. And I think that if they feel that I'm actually paying attention, that I really care, and that I'm listening to what they have to say, then they're gonna feel valued. And then I think that that's what most people just really need. And so that is like kind of a big thing for me.
And I'm gonna just chime in here and say, yeah, I agree with everything that you're, all of you are describing right now. And what I really love about it is it is about this quality of conversation. And we're not just talking about how quickly you can get through things, right? Because there's a tendency, I'm with you. I'm ready to problem solve. We had three boys of our own, and then we didn't quite go as far as you did, Rochelle, and grab like everybody else's child. We ended up with three more young men who lived with us. So we've got, we call it six boys that we've raised. And now we've got the seven grandkids. And if the desire, sometimes I'm ready to step in, because I don't have enough time. And it's like, I ain't got time for all this. Just what's, what's causing the problem? Good, here's what you're gonna do. And that's where my boys, is they've become adult men who have kids of their own. That's where they've had to step in from time to time and say, father, these are your grandchildren, not your children. We got it. Fine with you. We don't have time, right? And what I recognize is that the relationship with my boys has been wonderful, because a long time ago, we used to spend a lot of time in the car riding together to high school. It was a 20-something mile drive in the mountains. And we had great conversations. And it was just whatever. But the quality of our relationships is significant because of that. And what I've found with boards that have adopted this notion of dialogue first, right? That they have this interesting thing that starts to happen. And I'm gonna explain it by telling you about boards that don't have dialogue as a rule, as part of their culture. There's this conversation out there about brokerage and closure, okay? So, and this is critical, I think, as a board member, we should understand this concept. Closure is the quality of relationships within the board. We're just a tight board, we're really close together. I would argue that the board that Amy and I are part of right now, our closure is really tight. We, we just got a new board member that we're working to bring him in as well. But otherwise, our board relationships, we get along really, really well, and we try to dialogue as much as possible in our board meetings. Folks come in and they look like, oh, it's awful quiet and calm in here. Yeah, we're not trying to beat each other up. We are asking some questions we want to learn, because we want to figure out how do we best represent your needs, madam and mister public, okay? And so if you have a really tight closure, then your brokerage, the influence you have outside of the boardroom goes up significantly. I don't want to mention any particular boards that are struggling with this. I don't want to call Orange County out like that. That would be wrong of me, right? So I won't say what board I'm thinking of. But there are some boards out there that are struggling internally. They are at odds with each other. They are, the governance team is struggling. Very few people outside of the boardroom take them as serious as they should be taken. They're struggling. And because they're struggling, they just don't have a lot of influence outside of that room. Their credibility is really taking a hit, is damaged. But boards that have this ability to dialogue and ask each other questions and really listen and learn, they spend this time developing their healthy culture. Remember, we're talking about healthy. How do you become a healthier organization? And it starts at the top. It starts with the board, it starts with the governance team. The healthier you are as a group, the greater your influence is outside of the room, so that when you do go to advocate, people listen. Because they know that when you come out, you may have all gone in with a different opinion, but you've landed on this, you've used your dialogue to land on a decision. And now the board, the five of you are out there talking and advocating, and you sound like one voice. Because once you make the decision, it is about the kids. It is about how do we move this forward? And that's where I always tell boards, you have two roles. Two most important roles are, one, advocate, two, celebrate, period. If you're doing investigations, you should have gone and tried to get hired in the district, so you can do that investigation. Otherwise, advocate, celebrate. We come together, we make a decision, and now we figure out, how do we advocate on this decision so that it improves the lives of all of our students? Do we do that? Who do we need to go talk to? Do we need to go advocate with the water buffalo club, or whoever, your rhino, the coatis, or whatever club? Do we need to go advocate with those folks over in Sacramento and really share with them what we think about, what they could do for funding? What is it that you want to advocate on? And really, that is a result of when you, as a board, you've got quality closure as a board, you're a healthy board, and you're collaborative, your ability to influence outside of that boardroom goes up exponentially. And that's where we're looking at it. Signs of limited closure when boards are struggling, this is where all of a sudden it becomes a challenge. All of a sudden, these power struggles and loss of influence in the community, special interest groups starts to get hold and take over the conversations, and they lead it. And it just becomes chaotic again. And the cure for all of that, team building. And again, I told you about this earlier in the beginning. Team building is simply the conversation about how do we want to be. All right, it's not about what are we gonna do? It's just, how do we want to be with each other? And I want to be collaborative, I want to be, and it's the conversation, the quality of the conversation in dialogue. So before I move on, thoughts, because we got another activity. We're gonna put you in the breakout rooms in just a minute. And again, we are well ahead of time. I love this, I'm so excited. I mean, golly, gosh, we're very, we're well ahead of schedule here. So any final thoughts? Any final ahahs before we move on around this notion of brokerage and closure and team and feeling good and singing kumbaya? All right. Then I am going to move forward. And here's what we're gonna do. Because now we're gonna become, we're gonna start getting even closer, because you guys have been wanting to, you must love your school district, you must love your kids, because you talk about them nonstop. So we might as well start going there now. We're getting closer and closer to talking about them. I got one more conversation I want to have about you. So Amy is right now working on her math or whatever she's gonna do to put you into brand. And you're going to interview one another now. Uh, and you're going to interview one another. Now, the way the interview works is very simple. Uh, I have given you a script and the script is easy. Why is it important for you to be a part of the leadership for Meadows USD? Now, you're going to come up with an answer. And after that, whatever the answer is, you will follow it with the very next question. Well, tell me why is that important to you? And the answer, well, why is that important to you? Feeling a little nosey? Good. Because you just keep going to be nosey. And it's called the five whys. Now, do not get caught up on the number five, because that's not the magic, okay? Let me explain what I'm, what I'm looking for here. Um, I believe, I am convinced that every one of you believes that education is important. I'm assuming that based on what you've been sharing so far in the conversation. I'm picking up, I'm learning about all of you. All of you have the belief that education is important. I'm not interested in education being important. I'm interested in why something is important to you personally. So let me give you a little, a little bit of an explanation. Um, the difference between important and important to you. Uh, I mentioned earlier, my mother had a blood sugar one time of eight hundred and fifty. She is full, full on diabetic. Um, and, and she, we struggle to keep her doing well. We're a little concerned about her, her diabetes. When I was a small child, I remember an uncle who, um, lost his leg to diabetes from the thigh down. Um, my youngest son is, um, in, in a very athletic family. Um, he was the one that was without a doubt the most athletic. We are all wrestlers. So if you've lived in my house, you wrestle. It's just federal law. And, um, even the grandsons and the granddaughters are trying to think about wrestling, right? And so our youngest son, who was probably the most conditioned, well-conditioned out of all of us, he wrestled in college and then he was, he did this thing, cage fighting, right? The MMA, jump in the cage and punch and poke each other in the eyeball or whatever. And that was my son. He was doing that. And he was actually gotten to the point where he was, um, uh, he had an audition. If he had won that last fight of his, he was about to turn pro. He could go to a, join a gym pros and, and have a better shot at a UFC contract. One of his buddies kept in with that path and is now has a contract with the UFC. Golden Boy, look, Golden Boy Benito Lopez, just in case you're, you're curious. Golden Boy is a friend of mine. Um, and so I know a cage fighter. It's pretty cool. So anyhow, um, Cody in his last fight took a knee to the chest and he couldn't quite recover. We weren't sure about this because again, Cody was probably the most conditioned athlete in our family of athletes. And I've got one nephew who played college football in Kansas as a linebacker. So we're, we're kind of athletic, but Cody had shoulders above all of us. Diet impeccable, alright? He always managed his diet incredibly well. No sugar, no junk. Took that knee to the chest, was struggling to recover later on from a cold. My wife recognized the sign because, um, her mother is diabetic. She rushed our son to the hospital. Turned out his blood sugar was somewhere around five hundred. We discovered he's type one diabetic. We had no clue. Alright, and now we also, like I said, my mother-in-law is diabetic. Um, and now my daughter-in-law, Cody's wife, my son's wife, she is also, um, pre-diabetic. And so there's, I'm surrounded by diabetics. And if I tell you that, diet, exercise and nutrition are critical to me. I think it kind of makes a little more sense why, when I ask folks, hey, how many of you would say diet and exercise is important? Everyone says it's important, but very few people have the same relationship with it. Why, I think it's critical. So it's important to me personally. Does that make sense, all the difference between just important and why it's so important to me personally, right? That's what I'm looking for. I want to know, I want you to, as you're, you're interviewing your partner, you can be nosey like Dr. Oprah or Dr. Phil. I call those the two noisiest people on the planet, alright? And so when you're interviewing your partner, what you would do is again, if I'm interviewing Amy, I'm just going to walk her through this list. I'm not listening for the five questions. I'm listening for when I absolutely understand why it's critical to Amy on a personal level. I don't care if it's important. I wonder why it's important to her. I was doing this one time with some, um, with some teachers. And, uh, we were playing with this conversation about why is it important for you to be in education or teaching, whatever the question was. And these two ladies were sitting near me and they said, Mike, could you help us a little bit here? I don't think we're getting there. Uh, and I walked up and said, sure, where are you at? She told me and I said, okay. The, the person who was being interviewed, she was talking about the importance of education. I said, well, hey, I said, I get it. I understand that important, education is important. What I don't understand is why do you care that some third grader you're never going to see again learns how to read? And she said, because, when I was a little girl, and she told the story. And I said, okay, I get it. What I'd love to know then is why is it important to you that some child, again, child you may never see again, why is it important to you that they never go through what you had to go through to learn? Now it's full blown tears, right? And it's, ah, because, and she tells the story some more. And I'm thinking, okay, thank you. I, we got your why. That was the eighth question of why is that important to you? Alright, because the lady tended to try and avoid this vulnerability thing. For some of you, you're going to realize this isn't about the kids and it is about you. And that's an important conversation. I want to encourage you. Don't avoid it. Go there. So to the person who is playing the part of Dr. Phil or Dr. Oprah, you have my permission. Be nosey. And when you get to that point where you think they are there, like, whoo, I'm feeling uncomfortable, I'm that, ask at least one more question. You might be at number nine. I don't know. But ask until you get to the point where you think, got it. That is a critical reason why it's important to them personally. I can feel it. I can write the story. At that point, switch. Now Amy automatically starts to in, to interview me. Now here's what we're going to do. We're going to give you a total of ten minutes. That's ten minutes for me to, basically that says, I got five minutes to interview Amy. Amy's got five minutes to interview me. I talk a lot. So I'm probably going to steal six minutes of it. That means I only got four minutes to interview Amy. However you divide that out, it's ten minutes total. So again, when you get into your breakout room, I'm going to have her sit in for ten minutes. Don't waste too much time on who's going to, as a matter of fact, I'm going to go ahead and help you decide who goes first. Congratulations to the person who has the most brothers and sisters. You are the first person on the hot seat, alright? So that's all you got to do is go in there, I'm an only child. Alright, congratulations. You're going to go, you, there you go, alright? So if you have the most brothers and sisters, congratulations, you're the first guest on the Dr. Oprah, Dr. Phil show, and your partner's going to interview you. Keep track of the time. You got about five minutes to get through that first interview. And stay with this script. Why is it important for you? Why is it important for you? At the end of it, at the end of that five minutes, when I'm done interviewing Amy, she is going to write down whatever her fifth why was, whatever she landed on, write that down and then flip the script. And now I am the first, I'm the new guest on the Dr. Oprah Phil show and she interviews me. By the way, that is page eighteen in your booklets, if you're keeping track of the score at home. Page eighteen in your booklets, okay? And again, it's just go through this list. So any questions before we ship you off into the magic breakout group land? Alright, and so Margot, I think you're, you, you know where your breakout group is. We'll have you right here. And she's going to figure, I have no clue what Amy's doing on that side. I'm not allowed to know these things. So we'll see you back here in ten minutes. Again, why is it important for you to be a part of the leadership for Meadows USD? Ready, set, Amy, go.
Sorry, Ms. Rodriguez, I totally bailed on you.
I, I warned you. Amy doesn't mess around. You're getting, it's like the vortex. Ah, here we go. Welcome back. Oh, alright. Hope she didn't pull you out of your shoes when she brings her back in. Amy doesn't mess around. I, she just like crack a whip, it's done. Alright, so. Um, alright, fantastic. Well, now, here's what I want to know. If you were doing the interviewing, please raise your hand if you got to the point where you were starting to feel a little nosey. Like you were starting to dig a little, a little extra. Raise your hand if that was you. Anyone? No? You weren't nosey enough, Rochelle? Okay. You wanted to go into the real good stuff, like, no, 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 we're going to get in deeper. Um, alright. How many of you, please raise your hand if you got to the point where you realized, ooh, I've got this weird feeling happening inside. It's my emotions. Alright, did anyone get to the point where it was about you personally? Nice. Alright. Here's what I want to do. I am going to open up the floor a little bit, and I don't want you to go into the full story about the five whys. Because we still have another part of this activity that I want to give you time for. Um, but I would love to get like a very short version. Anyone willing to share their fifth why? We don't want to know the story about how you got there, because that would take five minutes. But I would love to know, love to hear, I mean, if you want, if anyone is comfortable with sharing, you know, what's that fifth one? What did you land on? And we don't have to have a whole story around it, but I would still love to know, what was that fifth why? What was the nugget that you landed on? Anyone care to share?
Well, for both of us, it was kind of about the same thing. Um, we found that, um, through our lives, education was, um, instilled in us. And we had, um, teachers, administrators, counselors that helped us all along. So to me, I want to pass it forward to another generation. So it's my way of giving back for the next generation.
Thank you. B, would, B, would you do me a favor and go ahead and volunteer someone else to go ahead and share now?
Uh, Mr. Garcia. He's muted.
Um, uh, what I, what I came up with is, uh, um, I want to help students achieve whatever their goals are. I want them to be ready to, um, be whatever they want to be in life and, and not, and not be dictated, uh, by, by, you know, by not getting enough resources for them to be, um, um, whatever, whatever they, they choose to be.
Now, here's what I would do normally, but I'm going to manage our time. Is how many of you can hear as he's sharing that right now? How many of you can tell that there's more story? That there's a lot deeper story there? Yeah, if we had time, I would put you on the hot seat right now in such, in a heartbeat. And we would just go down a little more because you've got a story. I can sense it as you were just describing that, that there's a story for you. Uh, and I can hallucinate. I can imagine what that story might be. Uh, so, and you and I, when we all are in the same room together, Robert, I might just ask you that question just as an aside. And just say, hey, tell me some more of the story. What's driving that for you? So, thank you. So please go ahead and volunteer someone else who's going to share their, their fifth why.
I'm Mr. Pinnell.
Of course. We, um, we come to mutual understanding that, or yes, that, um, we're here to make a difference on the less fortunate in some way. We're also here to influence and impact those that need a lending hand. And as I was interviewing my colleague, uh, she comes from a long line of educators and she is very influenced and her heart is exactly in the right place. I think she means well and she has every reason to continue being on this board as I continue to interview her. Um,
By the way, who did you interview? You were interviewing Rochelle?
Yes, I was.
Okay, I wanted to make sure. Okay. Because she's blushing right now. So I figured I, I wanted to make sure I got the right person. Alright.
You did.
Okay.
You did.
So go ahead and choose for us. Who would you like to see go next?
Why don't we give Ms. Lamerl?
Well, both Robert and I, uh, were, were on the same page. We realized that we didn't want the students from a small school to walk into high school and to be deterred in any way of achieving the things that they wanted. We wanted them to have success beyond high school in their personal lives and in their family lives. And hopefully we can be examples and builders of that.
Nice. Thank you. Alright, who else is next? By the way, we've got two people, no, three. I've lost track. Three or two people. Someone keep track. I'm not, I was led to believe there'd be no math on my part. Okay, good. There are three people left. So please go ahead and choose one of the three.
Oh, me. Um,
Yes.
Oh, the only one left is Kayla. Uh, who else is attending? Mrs. Hernandez? Oh.
With the three of you who haven't spoken yet, please raise your hand. The three you have not shared.
Danielle.
She can't see, honey. It's Rochelle.
So.
Okay. So my fifth why was humanity and better humanity for the, for the world, you know, and, and, and we want to make sure that, um, we're, we're creating students and children that at the end of the day, are good human beings, whether they're here in the district, here in the community, outside of the community. But I, I just, and, and hearing everybody speak, I just made an observation that, um, one way or another, everyone, like when you ask, why are you in leadership, is to give, to give, to give back. Whether we're giving back because we ourselves were given at some point by someone or because we weren't given, um, certain opportunities, you know, we, I, I, I think the, the, the mutual sentiment is, is giving back, you know, giving to these students, you know, opportunities and tools to, to make them successful.
Good. Thank you. Who's next? There's only two of them left.
Uh, Ms. Rodriguez?
Ms. Rodriguez. She knows when I call her Ms. Tavares. Um, you know, it, it is, it is uncomfortable and I, and I was about to get emotional with Ms. Rodriguez towards the end. That's probably why I bailed. Uh, I think even though I'm not from this community, I don't live within the Meadows District. Um, as an immigrant student, I identify with, uh, our students a lot. Um, like Daniela said, whether it is because we want to give back or because, because we were given or because we were not given. And I was not given the opportunity, uh, to be exposed to college and career pathways, for example. I was not given the opportunity to learn English with the rest of, of the English-only speaker, uh, students. Um, I was not given the opportunity to even exposed to, to an SAT or an ACT, because I know what Mr. Garcia was talking about earlier. So I identify with these students a lot. And I'll just leave it at that.
Nice. Thank you very much. I'm sure all of you just heard the emotion as it started to come out. Thank you. Uh, Rochelle, you're up.
Okay.
And then think in this case, you get to tell on, on Ernesto.
I know, that's what I was thinking too. Payback. Well, actually, since I love him and he's a great man, I had a really, I got emotional with hearing him because he got in it for, um, you know, to make a difference. And he didn't know if he could make a difference, but I was telling him that he does make a huge difference. And he has a good heart and he's done a lot for the district. And, um, he was just talking about, you know, the reasons why we got in. And I, like he said, both of my parents taught school. And I was telling him how my dad started a scholarship program. So for those children who didn't have opportunity to go to college, my dad gives scholarships for those children to go to school. So my dad just recently passed away and that, when he was dying of cancer, the hospice nurse that took care of him, my dad had put her through college. And she said, your dad believed in me when I didn't believe in myself. And he stayed after school to teach me English because I moved over here from Mexico and didn't know. And your dad stayed after school, tutored me and paid for me to go to college. So she's a nurse now because of my dad. And so I told him that the big thing for me is that my dad's like, you need to get on the board and you need to make a difference. And I don't have the funds to put people through college like he did. But it's an important thing for me to, to, to let them know that anything's possible to believe in themselves and know that just because you came here and you don't have the means, that you can get an education. And my dad taught me that. And I, I mean, the building was packed full when he passed and it was people that he put through school. So education has always been a huge thing that my dad stressed to me. He's like, when you leave this life, the only thing you take with you is the knowledge you gained. And I wanted to help those children realize that education, it's equal, like, to make it that everybody has an opportunity, no matter where you came from.
Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you so much, everyone, the, for everything that you were just sharing. So here's what we're going to do. I'm going to give you an opportunity to, uh, talk about, or to actually write a vision statement. And it's, I call it a vision statement, but it's about values clarification. Again, I don't remember who said it, but I remember someone earlier in this conversation, when we first got started, talked about values and becoming clear about that. So I want to spend some time, uh, really working on some clarity about the values that you have and, uh, really making some sense of it. So let me try to figure out why my screen isn't sharing correctly. And, uh, and see, we'll go back to that. And we try something, we go again. So let's get this one to share correctly. And there we go. So here's what we're going to work on. Uh, the way my friend liked to talk about it, Anthony, he, his belief was that, um, Uh, the way my friend liked to talk about it, Anthony, he, his belief was that, um, how do you, we say, uh, a vision is born from a sense of dissatisfaction in the world. So he just said, if you, if you're looking to have a vision, you just simply need to have something in the world going on that you're not satisfied with. And you'll find a vision. The vision is born from that. And what all of you were describing was this, this sense of dissatisfaction that there's work to be done. How do you make an impact on someone else's life? Right? And so I'm going to, I've got a template that Anthony gave me, um, that it will help you become clear about this values of the vision as you're, we're working on this. And I want to point out a couple of things about this thing right here. This elements of a vision is bullet number three is that it's a destination made real over time. That just simply means this is how you want the world to be someday. You acknowledge that it's not that way right now and your goal is to get it to be that way someday. Uh, and that your vision has to make room for the vision of those charged to your care, that last part, and it appeals. So I want to show you the template. Okay? And the template, the way it's set is that this is a vision statement or the values, if you will. And I'm going to go ahead and populate it with my vision statement. All right. So these are the words that I would use when I describe it. That I, Mike Walsham, committed to influencing a world that is kind and loving by being understanding, forgiving and generous. Now let me explain how this template works because usually folks write it differently. What I have figured out that this part about what I want to do in the world is I want to influence. I have figured out a long time ago that I do not have the ability to make the world do anything. I got grandkids who, and I've tried to make my grandkids do stuff, especially the 14 month old. He just looks at me like Papa, you don't understand. I'm going to go ahead and destroy whatever it is I'm not supposed to touch. Right? So I can't make, but I do have influence. So I'm going to use that. I want to change your definition of this word, a world, that phrase. I am not speaking of the globe. I am not speaking of the planet. When I talk about a world, I talk about my world is my family, my grandchildren, uh, Amy, her family, her grandson. Um, and oh, by the way, let me go back to this conversation here where bullet number six is it must make room for the vision of those charged to the leader's care. Congratulations Meadows family. You have been charged to my care. So congratulations or my apologies. You are now part of my world. All right. And I want to influence the world to be kind and loving. Someone usually interrupts me at this point and they say, hey, Mike, have you paid attention? The world's not a very kind and loving place. I know. I didn't say it is. I said, I want it to be. So I'm influencing it to someday be. I want this to describe what I want the world to be. And so again, those of you who are part of my world, my family, the folks who are charged my care, Amy's family, is my goal is to create a place where you are kind and loving. And the way I'm going to do that is I'm going to start by being understanding, forgiving and generous. And if you knew some of the story about my family, um, and my, some of my, my, uh, my oldest son is my stepson. I've been his dad since he was three. Um, I've had to practice in that relationship, being understanding, forgiving. I have a nephew who, um, my wife and I raised, and he is struggling with a meth addiction. And we had some tough moments where we struggled tremendously. But I, oh my goodness, talk about having to work on being understanding and forgiving. Woo, that was a lot of work for me. And in every case, I think it's worth, it's been worthwhile because he still keeps in touch. He still calls me to check and say, hey, I'm all right. It's like, good. I was a little concerned because you haven't called to ask for money in a while. So, uh, but it's that thing of just being understanding and forgiving. So here's what I want to do. I'm going to ask you to write your own. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to take my vision statement out. Why? Because I don't want to influence you to put in my words. I want to influence you to put in your own words. So what I want you to do is just simply take a few moments and just fill in the blanks. Put in your name and just talk about what it is you want to do. We're going to leave you right here and we're just going to work in silence. And then when everyone is done, I'll kind of have a sense and then we'll have a conversation about it. And then we're going to wrap up with a three minute video and I want to verify with Amy to make sure it's said correctly. So take a few moments and just go right ahead and I'll be right here with you. About one more minute. If you're still working on yours, we got about one more minute. And if you haven't finished, that's okay. This is a document that you can work on whenever you would like. Give you about 30 more seconds and then we're going to, we're going to have, have a good conversation about this. All right. So here's what we want to do. We've got, um, just want to talk a little bit about this conversation. We have a video that we're going to show you for about three minutes. I think it's critical, ties back to this. Uh, and then we're pretty much done. We'll set the stage for when we get together. I'm praying that we get together face to face. I want to shake hands with all of you because at some point I'd love to be able to do that. Uh, and we'll do it when it's safe, of course. So I have already shared. Basically what we're going to do is I've already shared my vision statement with you. I've already read it and shared it. So I'm going to ask you to do is we'll just go around the room is just whoever would like to go first. Um, you'll go and you guys, you already know the, the routine. Once you're done, volunteer the next person who's going to go next. But just simply read yours and what I'm going to ask you to do, listen really carefully to those last three words, especially about how it is you want to be while you're in this process. And just start to notice some of the, the overlap or the commonalities as you start to, to read each one of them. So whoever would like to go first, please go ahead and read yours and then choose who is next.
All right.
Go right ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I, Ernesto Pinedo, am committed to supporting a world that is fair and all inclusive by being watchful, mindful, but most of all caring.
Nice. Thank you very much. Who, who would you like to see go next, Ernesto?
Uh, Mr. Garcia, please.
It's hard to follow, to follow up, yeah, Mr. Pinedo. I, I, I didn't quite finish, uh, uh, the being part. I just, uh, this is what I, I got so far. I, Robert, am, am committed to helping the world become uh, achieve their goals in life by giving them enough tools to succeed. And that's, I'm, I'm still working in the how.
Perfect. That is perfect. Uh, and the reason I said, this is something you can continue to play with. Um, my oldest nephew, we did this three times for him. We, and it was, and we did it before he went to college and then he went to Buick College, a community junior, one of the community colleges here. He went there and, and was playing football, having a fantastic time, but he said his vision didn't quite fit. So he pulled me aside and said, can we work on this again? He changed it. Then he went off to Kansas to finish his college career and he changed it again. Um, and I had one young man, I was doing this with him at a conference for, it was a 10 day conference. He spent three different days with me for about a half an hour each time, working on this as he was really walking through his five whys. So Ernesto, Ernesto, so Robert, you have my permission to work on this as long as you'd like and you can change it whenever. So thank you. Please volunteer. Who's going to go next?
Ms. Margot.
I, Margot, am committed to being Christlike in a world that is equal and giving by being loving, helpful and non-judgmental.
I love that. Thank you so much. Please tell us who's going to go next.
Rochelle.
And it looks like she's busy. I think she's put out of fire with one. Oh, okay. Although this year, we lost your video.
Okay, I Rochelle am committed to make a difference in a world that is fair and e- and by being loving, loyal and non-judgmental.
Nice. Thank you very much. Who would you like to go next?
Um, how about? Has Mr. Pinedo, oh wait, Mr. Pinedo, um, B, Jesse Rodriguez.
You're on mute. You're on mute, B.
I thought we were doing the medals part. I still will hide on behalf of USD. So I wrote it according to the school. So.
But we would love to hear it. And then we want to encourage you to make it about you. So this is I think, we want to talk about the kids. I, I want you to have the experience first, then we'll go talk about the kids. This is about that vulnerability part. So you're welcome to share with us what you have or if you want, we can.
I have, I have a little bit of both. So I bet this is, I'm committed to provide a world that is, well, it shouldn't be provide because I was doing it for the school.
So here's what I'm going to do. I want you to go ahead and work on yours. We're going to keep talking. You go ahead and work on yours.
Okay.
And because it looks like Kayla is there dying to share.
To put her in.
Yeah. So we're going to go and throw her in and then we're going to come back to you, but you just go ahead and take your time and just, whatever it is that wants, that speaks to you is fine with me. So Kayla, go right ahead.
Okay, I'll go. Cause I'm dying to. I said, I Kayla, I Kayla am committed to advocating for a world that is accepting and inclusive. So Mr. Pinedo stole my word. But, uh, being loving, understanding and a voice for them.
Very nice. Very nice.
So I'll pick Ms. Tavares next.
I was just going to say, I wonder who's next. All right. There you go.
Okay. So I, Daniela, am committed to support a world that is respectful and understanding by being patient, considerate and fair.
Very nice. Very nice, Daniela. Thank you very much. Uh, and so I believe that takes us back to B as soon as you are ready.
Okay. I bet this I'm committed to protect the world that is equal and caring by make my notes here. By being friendly. Now I lost my words here. By protecting the environment. Okay, I'm going to go back. Friendly, caring and engaging.
Perfect.
I need to work on that one.
I love it.
Sorry.
So here's what I, what I want to ask. Did anyone notice any common themes or anything that you started to notice as people were, were sharing their last three words? Or what are the words about how they want the world to be? I, I just want to take about three minutes, not much. I'm going to take two to three minutes and just ask, so what did you notice? And then I'm, I'm going to show you this video and so we can get out of here on time. So anything that you noticed about those, those words that were being shared? Anyone would like to go? Please just jump in there.
I think we all care. That was a common denominator.
Good. Talk some more about that.
I think we all care. I think we all want to support the common good of all. And I think we all are very mindful of what we're looking for. And, uh, we're just saying it in our own version, our own words. But we're really saying it. It's really coming out. Uh, it's like squeezing a lemon. You know, so we're squeezing the, the thought of what it is that makes you who you are. And it turns out that we're all pretty much the same. We're all pretty much the same. Our vision is pretty much the same. The statement says it. It's personal, yes, but as a whole, we're speaking one language.
Good. Good. Someone else. What are your thoughts? What are your aha's? Thank you so much for that, Ernesto.
We had different concepts. We talked about different topics, topics. Um, even though we're talking about the world, some people were talking about religion, other people were talking about other things. So it brings you a different, different views.
Good. Good. How many of you are feeling closer to this group right now? Like, you know what? I really like these people. I already thought I liked them. I love them now. Anyone feeling that way? Isn't that the craziest thing? All we did was ask you to open up and just share what is it? How do you want the world to be? And I've been watching, uh, and this is what I love about my role is that for Amy and I, we get to sit and watch the, the smiles on your faces as the, as the light bulbs start to go on for you around this notion of healthy. And I got to tell you, you're, all of you are glowing. You, you may not realize it, maybe I'm just seeing something. It's a lighting. I don't know. But I've watched you start to really, you were already in love with each other and now it's like, it's, it's almost, it's open. Like, look, I just love you, I love the work, notion of working with you. And I'm, this is what I'm kind of sensing. So any other final thoughts? And then I'm going to have Amy show that video. Alright, so Amy, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing the screen. Uh, and then Amy's going to share, again, it's just about three minutes. And as she goes to share the screen, I'll kind of let you know. So one of the things I love about this video is Simon Sinek. This is the number three most downloaded video in TED Talks. Alright, the number one was a gentleman by the name of Sir Ken Robinson, who passed away recently. Who, he talked about schools and creativity. His was the number one most viewed. I don't know who number two is, but I do know that this is number three. Uh, and that we're going to just play the last three minutes of this, it's a wonderful 18 minute video, I highly recommend it. We're going to play just the last three minutes of it for you. Because he talks about this notion of having the importance of understanding your why. That's all we've been doing right now, is you've been identifying your why as it leads towards culture. And I want you to hear this, so Amy, if you will go ahead and play and then we will wrap it up. Yeah, we're going to go back, she didn't realize the sound was off.
Well, Dr. King wasn't the only man in America who was the, who was a great orator. He wasn't the only man in America who suffered in a pre-civil rights America. In fact, some of his ideas were bad. But he had a gift. He didn't go around telling people what needed to change in America. You know, he went around and told people what he believed. I believe, I believe, I believe, he told people. And people who believed what he believed, took his cause and they made it their own and they told people. And some of those people created structures to get the word out even more people. And lo and behold, 250,000 people showed up on the right day, on the right time to hear him speak. How many of them showed up for him? Zero. They showed up for themselves. What they believed about America that got them to travel on a bus for eight hours to stand in the sun in Washington for, in the middle of August. It's what they believed, and it wasn't about black versus white. 25% of the audience was white. Dr. King believed that there are two types of laws in this world. Those that are made by a higher authority, authority and those that are made by man. And not until all the laws that are made by man are consistent with the laws that are made by the higher authority, will we live in a just world. It just so happens that the civil rights movement was the perfect thing to help him bring his cause to life. We followed not him, not for him, but for ourselves. And by the way, he gave the I have a dream speech, not the I have a plan speech. Listen to politicians now with their comprehensive 12 point plans, they're not inspiring anybody. Because there are leaders and there are those who lead. Leaders hold a position of power or authority, but those who lead inspire us. Whether they're individuals or organizations, we follow those who lead, not because we have to, but because we want to. We follow those who lead, not for them, but for ourselves. And it's those who start with why that have the ability to inspire those around them or find others to inspire them. Thank you very much.
So. Need you to mute, Amy.
When school is.
Welcome to our studio. Alright, so here's what I want to land on. What I love about his conversation, and again, I highly recommend if you get an opportunity, if you just want to see the rest of that video. It is a wonderful video, he explains so many things. Uh, it's one of my favorite, I've taken notes on it, I do mean copious notes. Uh, and that he talks about the importance of really starting with this reason of why. And if you're very clear as a board, the way you are right now about your why and all these things that you've been discussing today with each other. Um, if you're holding these things in place, what I can promise you is that every board we've ever worked with, including the one last night, I really worked hard on them, getting them to understand this notion of dialogue and having the right conversation. What I can tell you is that you're on your way to having an incredibly healthy culture as a board. And that just radiates out across the district. A lot of it is because you are absolutely, again, I'm going to go back and compliment you and say, just the love that you have for each other is apparent. It is obvious and your excitement about the district and the work that's ahead of you. I'm excited to be along, be along this journey with you, I'm going to speak for Amy. Um, we love this opportunity to share with you and to help you figure out what is the critical, important work that needs to be done in your district. When we get together next time, hopefully, again, I'm hoping that we are standing in the room with you. I've loved other conversations, if not, we are trying to retool things and figure out, just like districts, how do you change everything to this virtual world? And so we're in the process of redesigning, that's, again, that's why we've got lights all over the place. And we've got a little more technology here than we've ever dealt with before. And we're having fun learning how to use it, alright? So I want to say thank you for just being in the conversation with us and staying with us and trusting us through this. Um, I am going to turn this over to the Mr. President, Mr. Garcia, I'm going to turn this over to you trustee Garcia, or President Garcia, I just like saying those words. So I'm going to turn this over to the president. Uh, I'm going to offer you, you've got five minutes left in the window, please use it as you would like. If anyone would like to share a thought, your final ahas, now is the great time to do it. Otherwise, President Garcia, this is entirely your meeting again. Mike and Amy are going to go on mute.
Thank you, Mike and Amy.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, I appreciate it, the training. The, I've received this last two, two or three months. I mean, I've learned a lot. And thank you, and I'll, hopefully I can see you, Mike, in person, next time, Amy, also you. Let's go with the agenda, I guess. Advanced planning, next board meeting will be February 9th, 2020 time, at 5:30, we assume again. And I guess we'll work on the agenda later. Any comments from, from the board?
Thank you, and we're really fast, really enjoyed it.
I also want to thank Mr. Walsh and of course, I want to thank your team, because I've learned a lot. Ms. Amy, of course. It's, it's, it's always good, it's always a good tool to, to, to use as we move along, because we can learn every day, something new. And today we learned something very new, the why. The why of things.
I was just going to say, I was texting Ms. Ralph, because she logged out, I know she's on our way to do stuff, but I wanted her to log back in, because I wanted to take a pic, a screenshot of all of you. Just because I, I, I know we can't be in person and like Ms. Rodriguez said, the time just flew and it, it was truly a, a learning experience. I knew, um, I, we were on the right path and, and, and we, we had a great opportunity and I'm just excited, even though it was virtual. I think that, like I said, the time went by really fast, so we really appreciate the time. Uh, Mike and Amy and, and especially the board, because I know you guys have busy lives and I so appreciate you for taking this opportunity. And just so you know, I will send you the invite for the next one, which, um, it's February 26th, we're going to keep it on the Fridays, the 26th. Um, it's February and then, hold on a second, Ms. Ralph, my phone, I dropped my phone. Oh, she says her computer died, sorry, so she was on her phone. Okay, so I'll just take a screenshot if you don't mind, Ms. Lamro, just to, real quickly, to take a screenshot, just to. Okay, so I'm just gonna say cheese, ready, one, two? Okay. I'm sorry, I'm a picture person, as the board knows, I'm always taking pictures. So I'm just, like I said, thank you so much and trustees, I'll see you guys at the next board meeting and you're welcome to come in anytime and, and I'll, I'll send you my update, as always, this afternoon. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Ms. Kayla?
Yes.
Are you hoping to have this next meeting of the 26th, also nine o'clock?
Um, I haven't discussed, we were going to debrief right now, Mr. Mike and Amy, I don't know if, if that's, is it a, a conflict in the mornings or?
No, no, just, just so that I, I'm actually.
It's going to be another four one, right, nine, nine to one? I mean, another four? Yes, okay, so yeah, we'll do the nine to one again on that day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Daniela didn't get my text. Sorry.
And stop recording.
Oh yes, thank you.